Good evening. The school board is currently in a closed meeting and the regular meeting will begin at 7:15. Thank you.
The October 7th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise as Student Representative Purnav Chowdhury leads us in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and a performance of the National Anthem by the Annandale High School Singers, under the direction of Patrick Vaughn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was wonderful. Thank you so much, Annandale High School Singers. Agenda Item 2.2: Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 7th, 2021, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Is there a motion? Move by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Omech. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Abstaining, that motion passes. Ms. Tolan has submitted a written request to virtually attend this evening's meeting due to a personal travel conflict. I will now call for a vote from Board members who are attending in person. All those in favor of approving Ms. Tolan's request for virtual participation in the October 7th meeting, please raise your hands. Those opposed? That motion passes. Agenda Item 2.03: Announcements. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information may be found at the back of the auditorium or on the website at fcpse.edu/schoolboard/BoardDocs. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast on Channel 99 and livestreamed on the website at fcpse.edu-tv-ch99. As a reminder, tonight, masks must be worn by everyone in attendance this evening as per school regulations. We'd like to welcome former School Board Member Ms. Elizabeth Schultz, who is in the audience this evening. Welcome, Ms. Schultz. Welcome, Ms. Schultz. I now... What a fan club. Okay, and I now call on Mr. Chowdhury for an announcement. Please go ahead.
National Red Ribbon Week is celebrated each year from October 23rd to October 31st. It was established in 1985 in memory of Enrique Camarena Salazar, a U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was killed in the line of duty while investigating a major drug cartel in Mexico. To honor his battle against illegal drugs, friends and neighbors began to wear red badges of satin, and some parents began to form coalitions. National Red Ribbon Week grew from these grassroots efforts to form a national movement against the use of illegal drugs. Its annual campaign encourages students to take a visible stand against substance abuse and makes a personal commitment to follow a drug-free lifestyle. The 2021 Red Ribbon theme is "Drug-Free Looks Like Me", and it's a reminder that everyday Americans across the country make significant daily contributions to their communities by being the best they can because they live drug-free. Additionally, October is National Principals Month. Throughout their careers, and especially throughout these past 19 months, principals have gone above and beyond to foster an inclusive, safe, and loving learning environment, where students are able to truly thrive in their school communities. So, let's make sure to thank our principals and to celebrate the tireless work they've done across Fairfax County and across our nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 2.04: LGBTQ+ History Month Resolution. I call on Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. Whereas LGBTQIA+ History Month is recognized in October across the United States and in Fairfax County Public Schools, to acknowledge and celebrate the contributions and experiences of well-known and too often overlooked or silenced LGBTQIA+ people, communities, and movements throughout our history, and whereas this special month was founded in 1994 by Missouri high school teacher Rodney Wilson, who chose October for the inaugural celebration to coincide with National Coming-Out Day on October 14th and to commemorate the First March on Washington for LGBTQIA+ Rights in October 1979. And whereas the National PTA states, quote, "Negative attitudes toward lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students puts an increased risk of violence and bullying, and that these negative attitudes also impact the student's ability to learn at school", and whereas, "Students are involved in Gender Sexuality Alliance Clubs at many middle and high schools throughout Fairfax County Public Schools, where they can network, socialize, and educate their communities through forums, announcements, and other activities, and these clubs are an asset to our schools, with research indicating that schools with GSAAs are better at achieving mental health outcomes", and whereas, "The Fairfax County School Board celebrates its richly diverse community of LGBTQIA+ students, families, and staff, recognizes the urgency of its charge to foster a school community where all feel valued, supported, and hopeful, and advances policies that protect LGBTQIA+ students and staff so they can live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, or violence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, on behalf of the students, educators, and families of Fairfax County Public Schools, does hereby proclaim October 2021 as LGBTQIA+ History Month in Fairfax County Public Schools, and in the spirit of one Fairfax, that the Fairfax County School Board urges all to learn more about the many historical and contemporary contributions and experiences of this diverse community, and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity, not only during LGBTQIA+ History Month, but throughout the entire year ISO move."
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Ms. Cohen. Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yes, thank you. The thing about history is that it's always being made. Today is just as much a part of history as the Stonewall riots were in 1969, or the assassination of Harvey Milk in 1979, or the 1978 when California voters rejected a ballot measure that sought to prohibit gay and lesbian people from teaching or working in schools because the initiative's authors saw them as threats to children. Today is just as much a part of history as 2015 when this school board finally voted to protect LGBTQIA+ students and staff from discrimination. Or 2016... Or 2016 when this board voted to make sure our family life education curriculum is accurate and more relevant to the needs of LGBTQIA+ students. This meeting will go much faster if we limit the applause from everybody. Or this year when the school board voted to enshrine protections for transgender and other gender expansive or non-binary students in our Student Rights and Responsibilities policy. The thing about all of these moments is that there have always been people on both sides of the issue at hand. After Stonewall, the liberal New York City media made fun of the rioters with headlines screaming "Queen bees were stinging mad", in one famous headline, after a lifetime of police violence and intimidation. After Harvey Milk's assassination, police officers reportedly made jokes over the radios and defended his murderer, a retired police officer. After all the votes were counted for that rejected 1978 ballot measure, nearly half of the state voted to keep gays and lesbians out of public schools because they thought they were a threat to children. In 2015, not every member of this school board serving at the time was willing to say something as simple as LGBTQIA+ employees and students shouldn't be subject to discrimination. The hallmark of LGBTQIA+ history, all history, is that as we come out, as we tell our friends, and our families, and our neighbors, and strangers, who we are, as we stand up for ourselves, society grows to accept us, and they stand with us. Because of that, it becomes easier, clearer, to see who is on the right side of history and who is on the wrong side of history. I am certain that the many LGBTQIA+ students who we hear from during these meetings, month after month, are on the right side of history, and they are helping to create it. And I can't wait to see the change they create in the world as they go forward. And I can't wait to see the change they create in the world as they go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Before we proceed, I do want to remind everyone that this is a public business meeting. And Virginia's open meeting laws provide members of the public with the right to observe, but not the right to participate or disrupt in any way these public meetings. Please do not disrupt our proceedings, and we are so ecstatic that we have such a large group here with us today. Thank you. Ms. Cohen, please speak.
This month, all across the country, people will be remembering those who were first, those who paved the way, those who inspire, those who gave their lives to change the world. Barbara Giddings, Marsha P. Johnson, Sylvia Rivera, Bayard Rush, Bill Tilden, Michael Sam, Leonard Matlovich, Alan Turing, Len Conway, Kathne Kazachno... Chenko, sorry. Harvey Milk, Bernie Frank, and our very own Danica Rome. This is so important because every time their stories are told, one of our kids will see themselves. They will be reminded of what we parents tell them all the time. You can be anything you want to be. But what is our role as a school system and as a community to make sure that it is true for each and every one of our students? There's a quote I ran across this morning. It said, "When a flower doesn't bloom, you fix the environment in which it grows, not the flower." This school system is the soil in which every one of our students should have the opportunity to bloom and thrive, no matter their ability, what god they pray to, who they love, their gender, or their pronouns. It is our responsibility that when we say every child by name and by need, it cannot just be a motto. It must be a charge, no matter the pushback.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. I know I have some other Board members wishing to speak. Ms. Kies-Gamara?
Thank you. I just want to say to our community and to our fellow Board members that I stand with you. I know that this Board stands with you. It is our charge, if you look at our strategic plan and the documents that guide this school system, we commit to having a caring culture for every student. And it is our job to constantly work toward improvement, to make sure that we try to do one day, the next day, a little better than we did the day before. And I'm also reminded of history. I just listened to a continuing legal education today that started at the very roots of our American history. And I know that we have had quite a few comments about how people think we should talk about history. But after the Civil War, there was a concerted effort to make sure that there was a narrative that was favorable to the South and disregarded the experiences of so many who had suffered atrocities. That has not helped this nation. And to be untruthful, to withhold information, will not help us now. And so I say that to say, education means having access to information. It means being able to grow and learn and respect one another. And I pray, I hope, every day that we work toward that goal and that every child in our schools feels that effort and feels welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara. Mr. Chowdhury? That's okay. No worries. Ms. McLaughlin?
I first want to begin by thanking my colleague Carl Frisch and Laura Jane Cohen for their beautiful remarks. As some may know in the audience, I am a proud parent of a gay son. And I know, as that journey for our family, when he came out in the middle of his junior year of high school, my husband and I couldn't be more proud of our son and his courage. But we also couldn't be more proud to be parents here in Fairfax County. He attended Woodson High School, and that was a community that made him feel safe and supported. And I can't thank Woodson enough, the neighborhood and the community that changed so much from when my husband and I were in high school in the early, mid-'80s. Anyone who comes from that time knows it was a different time to come through high school and to feel different. I also want to encourage the audience that look for an actor named Robert Gant. Robert Gant was one of my classmates at the University of Pennsylvania. Robert came through a time where it was still scary to forge a career in acting and to be out. And so Robert didn't come out until shortly after Ellen DeGeneres. But he was celebrated when he did, and he's had an amazing career since. And so my message tonight is simply to say that I am grateful to live in this county. I'm grateful to live in the United States, where we have continued to try each and every day, each year, each decade, to become a better, perfect union. So, thank you for being here to celebrate with us tonight on this important resolution.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Maren?
Thank you. I too am glad to serve with people who have different views on life. And I appreciate Mr. Frisch and Ms. Cohen in their work to make sure that all students feel that they have a space here, and I'm glad to join them. And I support students who want to explore their identity and who look to elevate love. Thank you.
Ms. Omech?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frisch and Ms. Cohen, for bringing this resolution. I'd be remiss not to, of course, recognize our incredible state community members in the audience, but also not to speak on this topic, given all that has unfolded over the past few weeks, months, and decades in our country's history and in our community as we continue to see history unfold. I do appreciate that Mr. Frisch mentioned and started us off with a reminder that history continues to be written. So, I remind myself and all of us that it is impossible to forge a path forward that includes everyone and that heals our nation without looking back, to acknowledge the harms of the past, the harms of today, and to let them inform the history we shape as we build that future as it continues to unfold. Our LGBTQIA+ youth and community members continue to be disproportionately impacted by harassment, by hate, by mistreatment, and targeting that are entirely unjustified, much of which we continue to see. In a month, when we also reflect on countering bullying, we must recognize that it is impossible to live in our communities with one another authentically, sincerely, and completely, all embracing of one another, without knowing and understanding the stories that our neighbors, our friends, and our colleagues have come with and have lived in their own pasts. I am very excited to support this today as a part of forging forward that journey for all of us to learn about one another, to gain common understanding, and to cultivate what we're building together that is an America for all of us, where FCPS can be a place for every child, inclusive of all of our identities, and a place where we can understand those journeys and stories that have brought us here today as we come together in One Fairfax.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to address this resolution for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to thank my colleagues for bringing it to us. But more importantly, I also wanted to address why we do important resolutions such as this. When we do resolutions that address the history of certain portions of our community or different ethnic groups, the reason we do that is because we want to recognize and ensure that our students see themselves in the potential. And these resolutions recognize the important history that the LGBTQIA+ community has brought to us and has made us a better place. And it allows our students to be inspired by the works of people that have come before them, not just to see it as a history book, but also to see themselves as being change-makers of the future. And that is why I am so happy when our colleagues bring resolutions like this to the table and so that we can have the discussion, but more importantly, so that we can inspire all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darnat Kofax?
Thank you. As a School Board member, I feel it's our job to make certain each and every one of our students feel safe and supported. And our job is to foster student success, and that's through a caring culture. I was proud to be Chair of this Board when we added gender identity as part of our nondiscrimination policy and when we made our own little bit of LGBTQ history. Our community is richly diverse, and I am honored to serve a system that continues to build this culture of inclusivity and equity.
Dr. Anderson?
Thank you. As no surprise to anyone here, I will say some words that I have said before. But before I get there, I want to say I'm very supportive of this resolution. Thank you to Mr. Frisch and Ms. Cohen for bringing it to our attention. In my former work as a teacher and a principal, my goal was always very, very singularly focused, to be sure that our kids felt safe, they felt secured, they felt supported. And I continue to want to do this in this position. It is what every single one of our children deserve. It is not a charge, it is not a task, it is our duty. And we should not have a separate expectation because of differences. So, I am honored to be able to share this resolution because I want that for my children. I want that for your children. I want that for all of our kids, that they're not walking into our buildings feeling judged or less than.
Ms. Seizmohizer?
Thank you. I echo the words of many of my colleagues, but I wanted to start by thanking Mr. Frisch and Ms. Cohen for bringing this forward. This is such an important resolution and an important thing for us as a Board, as school leaders, to stop and recognize. So, thank you for that. And Ms. McLaughlin, thank you for sharing your family's personal story. It always moves me whenever you talk about it. And I appreciate the vulnerability in sharing your story and how wonderful Woodson was. And my goal on the School Board is to make sure that every school is as welcoming and inclusive as what you shared about Woodson. Because every child who walks in our doors and every staff member who works with those children deserve an environment where they are seen for all of who they are, where they are valued for all of who they are, where they are welcomed for all of who they are, and all of who they are is seen as part of the norm of human experience, period, full stop. And I am so proud to be on a Board who has been and continues to create that environment and improve that environment. Because we cannot have a welcoming environment, we cannot have a caring culture, we cannot be inclusive unless every child sees themselves reflected in the community in which they are being educated. Until every child is not just worried about bullying, but until every child is seen for all of their strengths and welcomed. It is important to stop the bullying and the hate, but it's also important to promote the value that we are all human and we are all a valuable part of the human experience. And that is my goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seizmohizer. And I will just quickly offer my remarks. I also thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. It is imperative, as Ms. Kies-Gamara spoke, that we remember all of our history. And I will say that last year, when I had the opportunity to attend many graduations of our wonderful students, it was incredible to see them making their history in their speeches. And what I heard over and over and over were their words of accepting one another, of treating people with respect, of seeing people for who they are, of not passing judgments on each other. And that is the type of school system that I want to send my kids to. And every single day that I come to this job and to the decisions we have to make, that is the litmus test that I use. How would I like my child to be treated? And I want my child treated with respect and dignity. And all children deserve that in Fairfax County and in every school and in our society. Thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed and abstaining? And that motion passes unanimously with Ms. Tolan away.
If we could have the folks from FCPS Pride come forward for a photo with the Board and the resolution?
Agenda item 2.05, National Dyslexia Awareness Month Resolution. I call on Ms. Maren.
Thank you. Whereas the Virginia Department of Education defines dyslexia in part as a specific learning disability that is neurobiological in origin, that is characterized by difficulties with accurate and affluent word recognition and by poor spelling and decoding abilities. And whereas the onset and severity of dyslexia varies for each individual and impacts up to 15% to 20% of the population, according to the International Dyslexia Association. And whereas dyslexia cannot only present challenges with reading, writing, and spelling, but also affects speaking, remembering, understanding, speed, movement, and basic math. And whereas dyslexia is a different way of learning and thinking, though with the right teaching, most dyslexics learn to read and write. And whereas Governor Ralph Northam has recognized October 2021 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Virginia to acknowledge educators specializing in effective teaching strategies for individuals with dyslexia and to celebrate the many achievements of children and adults, students, and working professionals who have dyslexia. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools is developing a division-wide literacy plan that ensures comprehensive pre-K-12 research-based reading instruction that is aligned with the science of reading so that all students may achieve their full potential. And whereas students, educators, and families will benefit from increased awareness about the nature of dyslexia and the combination of strengths and difficulties that individuals with dyslexia can have. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes- Now therefore be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board recognizes October 2021 as Dyslexia Awareness Month and encourages all residents and FCPS staff to learn more about dyslexia, including identifying dyslexia, knowing supports available for use by educators and families, and highlighting the success that individuals with dyslexia can have in their careers and life. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Omeish. Ms. Maron, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Yes. I think this past Tuesday was the most exciting school board meeting I've attended yet because we had such a robust conversation about how to ensure that every child in FCPS receives reading instruction to ensure that they are achieving language proficiency, language arts proficiency. And we had a presentation by one of the foremost scholars in the science of reading, Dr. Emily Solari from UVA. And we really, there was a buzz of excitement and agreement that this is the way to move forward, to make sure all of our students are achieving to their best abilities. This comes from a push by advocates, individuals, and groups, including Decoding Dyslexia Virginia. And I am experiencing firsthand in my own family what it takes to educate and really train someone with dyslexia to decode letters and sounds and to put words and sentences together to understand the meaning of written text. It is indeed a very specific and labor-intensive activity that takes attention day after day to reprogram the brain to see letters differently than how naturally it actually might be. But in the vein of being strengths-focused, while people with dyslexia do have a disadvantage and a disability, when it comes to reading and writing, there are so many other things they can be skilled at. Seeing the big picture of situations and ideas, making subtle connections between things, thinking in visual and graphic ways that can lead to new solutions and ideas. So a key thing that we can do for students with dyslexia is to build and retain the confidence that children have about their own selves, that despite dyslexia, they have strengths and capabilities. So we need to reinforce along the way that they are not there yet. And that's the growth mindset that we can aim to instill in students throughout their learning. They need to learn differently, and FCPS must meet that need.
Ms. Omeish?
Thank you. Happy to follow Ms. Maron, especially just after this work session that we had on literacy to support our students. I want to thank Decoding Dyslexia for all the hard work they've put in to raising awareness on this topic and really advocating within our schools to make sure there are more supportive environments. My point of advocacy for the community is to reconsider how we even think about these topics. So in the same way that we want to cultivate a society, a community, schools that are inclusive and safe for all kids regardless of their background, whether that be racial, gender identity, whether that be religion, in the same way we talk about neurodiversity and the ways we can support our students in how they learn and they process. And it's surprising, and perhaps not known to everyone, that one in five people have dyslexia. That means tens of members of this audience likely live with dyslexia. And so it's essential for us as a society, as a community, to continue to understand one another so that we can cultivate those supportive environments. And of course, as a division, we commit to that literacy work, which will hopefully keep in mind the neurodiversity element. And then, you know, we can continue to advocate for professional development and additional supports that will ensure all of our professionals are aware and that every child is welcome no matter their diverse neural capabilities.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I couldn't let us go by tonight without making a connection because we just had a resolution about history. And when we talk about dyslexia, we should also be able to learn from history and from some of the famous people whom have had dyslexia and are actually twice exceptional. So I just wanted to give a couple of names so that we can inspire our students about how people have, with the proper teaching and given the best skills to be able to navigate the challenges of reading, they have overcome and excelled. For example, Steven Spielberg, Henry Winkler, Octavia Spencer, and Whoopi Goldberg are all famous people we know about today. But we also have famous scientists, and I just wanted to identify three off the cuff, and those are Pierre Curie, very important given the pandemic we're dealing with today, Thomas Edison, we can thank him for our lights, and Albert Einstein. And so when we talk about dyslexia, we should be talking about the brilliant minds that dyslexic children have and that we want to cultivate in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
I'm sorry, I think my light was on from previously, but I will quickly share something that I'm excited about. I remember as a young assistant principal, sitting in IEP meetings where we could not even whisper the term dyslexia in schools. It was the silent word that we could not approach it. So I'm just very excited about the progress that we've made to be sure that we are diagnosing students properly, so we have the right interventions. So happy to support.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
As we talk about history this evening, I'd like to bring a little history about Fairfax County community alone on dyslexia. I am so proud that a number of very strong women here in Fairfax County created and founded Decoding Dyslexia Virginia, the chapter in Virginia, started right here in Fairfax County. And when they not only fought so hard to help educate the school board, our superintendent at the time, Karen Garza, also the community, our educators about why best-in-class dyslexia education was so vital to, as Ms. Omeish said, one in five students, they worked tirelessly to not only make a difference here in Fairfax County, and they did. She created a new position for that role so that we could really begin best-in-class across all 200 schools in Fairfax County. But they also then helped bring this knowledge and awareness to the Commonwealth of Virginia. And that's why, as it's noted in here, the governor doing that recognition, it started with strong women right here in Fairfax County. And I'm very grateful to be just acknowledging that history and to the prior school board who listened so carefully and fought so hard alongside of them to make the progress that we continue to make even here today. So to all of our students and families, please do know that we care. And your voices, your advocacy, your research, everything you do that you bring to us, it matters. So thank you again to our amazing community that helps us become a better school system.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser.
I will be brief. I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin recognizing Decoding Dyslexia and the incredible hard work Decoding Dyslexia has done, and SEPTA, and many of the other organizations, to really bring light the needs of our students with dyslexia, but as importantly, the strengths of our students with dyslexia and all of our students who are neurodiverse. And I just wanted to highlight that, that I'm glad that Ms. Maron mentioned that many of our students with dyslexia, and I would say many of our special ed students, if not all of them, have strengths that we should be highlighting. And so one of my goals, and I know the goals of many of my colleagues, is to have a strengths-focused emphasis for all of our students. And so while it's very important to make sure we have the right programming for our dyslexic students, it's also important to have programming that celebrates and gives room and space to advance their strengths. So I'm really super excited about that. I'm super excited about this resolution, and thank you to our advocates for keeping this at the forefront and making sure that students with dyslexia are educated in the way that they need to be educated. Thank you.
Ms. Darnakovacs?
Yes, and I just too want to thank our community who has brought this to our attention. I remember my first year on the board, when I guess my daughter was probably in third or fourth grade, I was brought forward this issue by advocacy groups in her elementary school about how things were not as well as they could be for those children. So I have seen and heard from you and watched this movement grow, and thank you for educating us, thank you for being at the forefront. We are blessed to have so many engaged parents to help us, help make our decisions. So thank you, continue to do that for us and with us, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. I will also support this resolution. Thank you, Ms. Maron. I will say, I remember when I first began teaching, we didn't really talk about dyslexia. That wasn't like a thing or a word we used. And because of all the hard work and the advocates who pushed and pushed and pushed, my own daughter now, who is dyslexic, is having a very good experience with the teachers and the interventions in Fairfax County. And as Ms. Seismarheiser said, looking at these children who are neurodiverse, they have strengths that have to be harnessed. And I'll just say that her strength is she is creative and persistent. And with that, I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstaining? And that motion passes with Ms. Tolan voting yes. Thank you. Okay, we'd like to invite everyone who's here this evening in support of this resolution to please join us at the front for a board photo. Okay, I'd like to call on Ms. Tolan for a question of personal privilege. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you. Since I'm not in the meeting in person, I just did want to voice my support for the LGBTQIA resolution that was just passed earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. That is noted.
Thank you.
Agenda item 2.06, testimony on Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. At this time, we will open the public hearing on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The Virginia Department of Education requires each local school board to adopt biennially a Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The 2021 plan includes pertinent data from fiscal year '21 and consists of school board student achievement measures, along with operational plans for the system. The comments shared by the public hearing speakers must address the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. If you have not registered to speak tonight but would like an opportunity to address the board, please see one of the clerks to sign up for one of the five extra reserved speaker slots. Tonight, there are 14 speakers that have registered to address the board.
Our first speaker is Megan Duncan. Our next speaker is Melinda Hamer. Melinda Hamer? Our next speaker is Christina Cesari.
I've been an educator with FCPS for over 10 years, and today, I'm not here as a teacher, but I'm here as a parent of my two elementary school-aged children. A decade ago, my husband and I chose to settle our family in Fairfax County because of the quality of schools and exemplary work from teachers. I've witnessed firsthand how educators in our district connect lessons in amazing ways to engage students and provide authentic learning experiences. Teachers understand what the job entails, from grading papers at their child's baseball games to arriving early to help a student. Teachers balance the job to the best of their self, to the students. They have made the most of stagnant pay, increasing class sizes, and higher testing demands. It's widely known that good teachers have been leaving FCPS for higher pay in neighboring districts for several years. This makes me concerned as a parent because it jeopardizes the well-being of our students. My children have invested time and trust in forming connections with teachers, only for several of those teachers to leave the district or leave the profession. I was shocked to see over 130 openings in the county at the start of this week. My children and all FCPS students deserve the best resource in this county, its teachers. Rather than investing resources in attracting and retaining the best talent, FCPS places too much emphasis on initiatives that do little to benefit our children. My children do not need another SEL test. They need an experienced teacher that not only knows the appropriate pacing of content, but has the educational background to understand their unique socio-emotional needs as children. They need hands-on labs, field trips, and memories to connect with their learning. They need teachers who can build positive and appropriate relationships. We need to give teachers the time and ability professionally and financially to create these opportunities so that they can bring their best self to the classroom. We should be helping our talented teachers to stay in this county for our children's sake. I ask that you make teacher pay and well-being a priority in Goal Three of the Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Missy Pratt.
My name is Missy Pratt. I'm a parent in the FCPS school system, and I'm here to talk about the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan, a plan for parent and family involvement to include building successful school and parent partnerships that shall be developed with staff and community involvement, including participation by parents. And I'm here to hold you, FCPS leadership, accountable to your plans. But according to the DOJ, apparently, holding school board and school leadership accountable is tantamount to domestic terrorism. This is not terrorism. This is accountability. We are the parents, unlike true domestic terrorists and other leftist organizations which have been endorsed by FCPS. No, we are the parents of the children you have been entrusted to craft a decent education for. But you continue to make egregious policies and implement toxic curricula that harms our kids. Marxist ideologies permeating our curriculum, critical race theory undermining true history in our great nation, pornography and pedophilia found in our children's library books, forced masking which is ineffective, breeding ground for diseases, forced rebreathing of carbon dioxide, and dangerous restriction of oxygen, forcing medical exemption experiments on our children. Over 15,000 deaths, according to the VAERS data, over 22,000 permanently disabled. Dr. Brabran, you said that you want the shot for five-year-olds, statistically, 0% chance of a five-year-old dying from this disease. You admitted knowing the risks of 12- to 17-year-olds having heart inflammation. All of this is not partnering with parents. We pay you to help our kids, not hurt our kids. We pay you to educate, not...
Our next speaker is Thompson Sawyer. Our next speaker is Thompson Sawyer.
Hello?
I would like to remind our speakers that this is a public testimony on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan, and to please try to avoid disruptions. Thank you.
Thompson Sawyer, go ahead.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you. My topic is kind of sort of involved with what you're talking about, but it's a topic that other parents, I'm sure, at this present time are talking about. And it's the transportation, the bus transportation for our children to school in the mornings and the evenings.
at multiple different times. But thank you again for that opportunity to present this to you. Hopefully, it's something that you will address and look at. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cindy Walsh. Cindy Walsh? Our next speaker is Michael Clancy. Michael Clancy? Angela Boyer? Oh, never mind. Michael Clancy.
Good evening. I'm Mike Clancy. My children in the aggregate have almost 25 years in Fairfax County Public Schools. I have four points on the comprehensive plan. First, the plan should include robust programs for all students at all academic levels and need so that each student has the opportunity to maximize their potential. Second, excellence in STEM has to be developed starting in first grade. It can't be forced through discriminatory admissions policies to TJ or by holding back students from advancing in math while they're in middle school. Third, third, you must completely overhaul the criteria for selecting the books at our school libraries and those used in classes. You are aware of the pornographic books that were found in Fairfax High School. You should know that Virginia law makes the possession, distribution, and exhibition of obscene material in child pornography a felony crime. Every day you allow such books to be in our schools makes you complicit in furthering potential violations of the law. Finally, the plan talks about promoting parent participation, and I agree. We heard resolutions tonight. In this regard, the board should pass a resolution condemning the Department of Justice for unleashing the FBI to harass and intimidate parents based on false narratives of violence. The FBI has no place in our school board. That's not, this is not Russia, this is not Communist China. This is the United States of America. Ours is the government for the people. And we, the people and the voters, have First Amendment rights, rights of free speech, free association, the right to petition the government, and we will not be intimidated by the government's abuse of power, and we will vote for new leadership at every level of the government. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angela Boyer. Angela Boyer?
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here tonight. It's nice to meet you and see each other face-to-face, I think. It's promising to be a very interesting evening so far. I'm concerned taxpayer and mother of a Fairfax County school graduate. I'm here tonight to discuss the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan, and I looked for it. I and my friends looked for it. We couldn't find it. We don't know what it is. We didn't see it. So I thought perhaps it would be important now to give you a few ideas on what I think it might cover and what it should cover. Let's talk about and parse those words, "division." Division was accomplished and ushered in by the illustrious One Fairfax Initiative introduced by our very own Elaine Tolan. And thank you, ma'am, for that, because you introduced the grandmother of all the words here, equity, the grandmother of CRT, the new buzzword that we've now endured for the last decade, and I'm sure more to come. So tell me, do you know that CRT seeks to divide our children and define them solely through their race and identity? I think you know this already. I think we all know this already. We all know it already, and yet we talk to you, and you sit there deft, dumb, and mute. Don't think we don't notice, because we do. And another word that's been very popular today and over the last few months has been the fundamental march through our institutions for the tactic of turning it into a communist environment. And of course, you could laugh now, you may not laugh later when you can't turn the bus around. Lenin said, "Give me four years to teach the children, and the seeds I have sown will never be uprooted." And sadly, my child was never taught about Lenin, she was never taught about Stalin, she was never taught about communism or fascism, and maybe that's why she didn't-
Our next speaker is John Kotschka.
I'm a Fairfax County resident, taxpayer, and Sunday School teacher. On page five of the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan it states, "All FCPS K-12 students will continuously progress in their development of the portrait of the graduate attributes." I stood at this podium and read graphic sexual material from two boys kissing, and I have the right to speak. If you can't silence these people, they need to leave. I stood at this podium and read graphic sexual material from two boys kissing. It describes how a 30-year-old something tells an under-8 boy how exhilarating it will be to sodomize him. What is the takeaway for graduates? Learn how to commit criminal sexual conduct or being a willing victim of predators? The Biden administration just said, "We are domestic terrorists." This board should pass a resolution tonight condemning the Department of Justice for trying to intimidate and cancel parents. But instead, you're going to pass a resolution pushing gender sexuality clubs on students in Fairfax County. A few years ago, a Fairfax mom tried to do something about the porn that you're pushing on kids. Her son showed her a reading assignment given to him by his Fairfax County Public School that said, this is, quote, "All in their 20s, minus women, fucking cows, dreaming of rape, waiting for-"
Sir-
These are a part of a reading assignment that your school assigned to our kids-
We have children in the room. No obscenities, please.
All this mother asked for was that you tell parents first before making their kids read the trash. But you refuse. The Virginia Department of Education refused. We will not be silenced. We are not intimidated by unconstitutional fascists.
Our next speaker-
I would like, I would like to remind our public that we cannot hear our speakers when there are disruptions. Please allow our speakers their two minutes. Please go ahead, clerk.
Our next speaker? Our next speaker is Chaya Ortiz. Chaya Ortiz. Our next speaker is Christopher Henzel.
I read a draft of the county school system's comprehensive plan. I regret to say that the school board itself is hampering progress towards many of the goals set out in this document. For example, on page three, the vision statement of the school system includes an item-headed "community support." It states as an assumption that the community will, quote, "embrace its schools and support the financial needs of the school system." I recommend changing this item to read, "The board and the Fairfax County Public Schools will earn the support of citizens for the financial needs of the system." The board has lost the support of a large part of the community through their recent mishandling of the controversy over pornography in school libraries. The board can take a big step toward repairing its relationship with the public by ordering an immediate review of all materials in the schools that include sexual content that is inappropriate for students. Similarly, under the heading "School System Guiding Principles," there is this item on page four. "Families play a fundamental role in their children's education." This would seem to be at odds with the statements of some members of the board and Mr. McAuliffe over the past two weeks. Rather than engaging with citizens angered over the pornographic materials used in the schools, these board members publicly attacked parents. The board cannot disqualify all criticism as some kind of illegal harassment and expect to retain the support of the community. Not even the FBI can make that happen for you. Finally, on page 34, one finds the "Technology Plan." While this section discusses protecting the school system's data from hacking, it makes no mention of the data on-
Our next speaker is Laura Timmons.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Thank you.
The Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan talks of the Parent Resource Center on page 38. It specifically says that it works to encourage parent participation and promoting parent awareness. That all sounds really great, but it is in direct contradiction of the school board members supporting the labeling of dissenting parents as domestic terrorists. Thank goodness we have the Constitution. The first three words, "we, the people," affirm that the government of the United States exists to serve the people. The First Amendment provides us freedom of speech, the right to peacefully assemble, and the right to petition government for the redress of grievances. You are our elected officials. It is not a privilege but a right to petition you and inform you if we don't like what's happening in our schools. Fairfax County held the elections, and each of you were elected to represent us. The three at-large candidates received 24, 22, and 21% of registered voters in Fairfax County. There is approximately 75% of Fairfax County residents that either didn't vote or didn't vote for you. You were not elected to represent only the 25%, you were elected to represent all of Fairfax County. Rather than attempting, rather than attempting to suppress free speech that you don't like, you should probably listen to it, figure out what we should be doing differently. Stop trying to restrict our freedom to the vote, to one vote on Election Day. In closing, I would like to invite you to read a store, a study out of University of Michigan that states anger in politics can play a particularly vital role, motivating some people to participate in ways that they might not ordinarily do so. Anger boosted precedent, anger boosted participation in election-
Our next speaker is Cole Mallard.
I would like to remind everyone that we cannot have disruptions. We'd like to hear from our speakers.
Go ahead, Mr.- Thank you. All right. Good evening. My name is Cole Mallard. I'm addressing pages two and three, Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan, citing number six, Virginia Public School Standards of Quality. It requires a plan for parent and family involvement to include building successful school and parent partnerships that shall be developed with staff and community involvement, including participation by parents. I am a 50-year Fairfax County taxpayer, a Vietnam veteran, a former Voice of America producer broadcaster, and a community member and the parent of three former FCPS students. We took, we took our youngest out of CPS in seventh grade because of the family life education curriculum and decided to enroll her in private schools at the additional cost of $50,000 to us. We could afford it, but many parents unfortunately cannot. Many parents are not English proficient, and they often work several jobs. They do not necessarily know what is happening. FCPS recently entered into a $700,000 contract with New York's Leadership Academy to stealthily survey students and parents about critical race theory curriculum. FCPS has paid Mr. Kennedy $20,000 for one hour's work. That's to introduce racism. Now, FCPS quietly signed a $1.8 million contract with Panorama Education, a Boston-based big tech contractor, to conduct a multi-year "social and emotional learning screener," end quote, giving them the right to collect psychometrics on the school that's districts 180,000 students and invasive questions. Panorama CEO is married to Attorney General Garland's daughter. If parents get upset, AG Garland will classify them as domestic terrorists. And these are the parents and community members you are to build successful partnerships with. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is George Becerra. George Becerra?
Can you hear me, ma'am? Can you hear me?
Go ahead, we hear you.
Good evening, Chairman Bukarski, school board members, and Dr. Brabran. As the majority of this new board is learning and realizing, the 2021 Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan is submitted to the state every two years. It's kind of a friendly self-study report from FCPS, where the state has no enforcement or accountability measures to the plan. The Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee critically reviewed and analyzed the data and information in the plan, but drew less rosy conclusions. On performance of which all students in the general population could participate, most 2019, 2020 targets are not met, and the gaps between Asian and white students and all other demographic groups were significant, be it school readiness for kindergarten, reading at math SOLs course, on-time graduation, and participation in performance of rigorous coursework, including advanced academic and honors courses, taking Algebra I by eighth grade and passing honors AP IB and dual enrollment classes. The data also showed that all demographic groups benefited and performed nearly equal and given opportunities to participating young scholars, elementary compact accelerated math, and elementary and middle school Level 4 courses. Participation in these programs tracks them into middle school Algebra I and honors classes, eligibility to apply to TJ and to enroll to AP and IB dual enrollment classes, and finally, passing IB and AP exams by their senior year. FCPS should determine whether retaining the portrait or graduate goals is needed today for all students and not just a minority who benefit from the system that moves students along different academic and career tracks. The portrait or graduate has been a focus for FCPS since it was adopted in 2014, but no formal data has yet to be collected on progress toward these attributes. MSAO CSS 12 school Division-Wide objectives. Our formal letter will be provided to the board tomorrow so you can digest our evaluations of the objectives. Also, the board should make sure they are connecting all the dots with all the plans and making sure there are meaningful, data-driven school improvement plans for each 200-plus schools, in which each principal will be evaluated from, which goes into the RAS evaluation, then to the deputy superintendent's evaluation, and then finally to the superintendent's evaluation, a total of system accountability. On a final note, MSAO has invited Ms. Bukarski for its December 18 to discuss the-
Our next speaker is Amber Iglesias.
Hi, everybody. I just signed up, so I'm not as prepared as everybody else, but my name's Amber Iglesias, and I have two disabled children that attend Fairfax County Public Schools and the elementary level. My son is autistic, and he's also Level 4 AAP. He recently had to move from his neighborhood school in the local Level 4 program to a CSS site. He is very, very happy, and it's a great program. However, he does not get Level 4 AAP anymore. I'm here today to ask you to invest in 2E centers throughout the district. We already have the infrastructure. We have CSS sites across every pyramid, and we also have AAP centers and local AAP schools. Every school has an AART. A meaningful partnership between these two programs is the next logical step for our 2E children. FCPS claims to meet every child where they are, but 2E children like mine are not able to flourish and learn in the appropriate setting. FCPS also claims to be the leader and lead the way for other school districts, so I'm asking you to- FCPS should determine whether retaining the portrait or graduate goals is needed today for all students and not just a minority who benefit from the system that moves students along different academic and career tracks. The portrait or graduate has been a focus for FCPS since it was adopted in 2014, but no formal data has yet to be collected on progress toward these attributes. MSAO assesses twelve school division-wide objectives. Our formal letter will be provided to the Board tomorrow, so you can digest our evaluations of the objectives. Also, the Board should make sure they are connecting all the dots with all the plans and making sure there are meaningful, data-driven school improvement plans for each two-hundred-plus schools, in which each principal will be evaluated from, which goes into the RAS evaluation, then to the deputy superintendent’s evaluation, and then finally to the superintendent’s evaluation, a total of system accountability. On a final note, MSAO has invited Ms. Bukowski for its December eight meeting to discuss the-
Our next speaker is Amber Iglesias.
I just signed up, so I’m not as prepared as everybody else, but my name’s Amber Iglesias, and I have two disabled children that attend Fairfax County Public Schools in the elementary level. My son is autistic, and he’s also Level Four AAP. He recently had to move from his neighborhood school in the local Level Four program to a CSS site. He is very, very happy, and it’s a great program. However, he does not get Level Four AAP anymore. I’m here today to ask you to invest in 2E centers throughout the district. We already have the infrastructure. We have CSS sites across every pyramid, and we also have AAP centers and local AAP schools. Every school has an AART. A meaningful partnership between these two programs is the next logical step for our 2E children. FCPS claims to meet every child where they are, but 2E children like mine are not able to flourish and learn in the appropriate setting. FCPS also claims to be the leader and lead the way for other school districts, so I’m asking you to do this. Lead the way, so children like my son can flourish across the state and the country. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Campbell.
I am excited for the work being done on the literacy plan discussed at Tuesday’s work session. I especially appreciated Dr. Solari specifically speaking throughout the work session about debunking the myth that all children learn to read differently. The brain science shows that all children require explicit systemic instruction. As a parent of a child accessing the adapted curriculum, I was incredibly disappointed by the FCPS staff response that adapted curriculum students were not part of the plan, that they have a separate curriculum. I repeat Dr. Solari’s words that the concept that children learn to read differently is a myth. Separate is not equal. Students with significant disabilities can learn to read and write. Research supports this. I urge the school board and leadership to purchase the book, Comprehensive Literacy for All: Teaching Students with Significant Disabilities to Read and Write, by Karen Erickson and David Kovenhever. Additionally, if FCPS is serious about all kindergartners entering will have the essential skills needed for school success, then FCPS must stop denying preschool students access to speech and language services. Students cannot be given AAC devices due to their severity of need for their communication, yet not given speech services to learn, to support learning how to use those devices. This is a longstanding issue that deprives students of necessary interventions at a critical time of their development. I really want to thank you so much for the literacy plan. It is critically important. It must include all students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashra Naimani.
So I have come before you for many months now. In May 2020, I was just another PTA mom. I didn’t care about your politics because I thought you had it under control. And then, all of a sudden, the system shut down. And now, a year and a half later, you try to throw this Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan at us as if we’re going to get lost in these details and be convinced- I have sat alone here sometimes because I want to hear what you have to say as you try to pursue your tactics of deception and political corruption. But now you have a room full of parents because you have not listened to us for the last year and a half. We stand here now. My shirt says very simply, “I am a mom, not a domestic terrorist.” You, Abrar Omeish, sat here on the eve of 9/11 and dared to say that the hijackers from 9/11 should not be called terrorists. But now, we sit here before you. Stacey Langton came before you, exposing pornography that you are buying for our school libraries, and not a single one of you phoned her. Not a single one of you has followed up with her. And so why do you have this, why do you have this parent engagement when you don’t want to engage with parents? You’ve made it now federal policy to terrorize us, to take a war on us. Why are these parents here? You are parents. Can you not have any comprehension of the frustration, anger, and just sadness that is gripping the hearts of parents across this country? You speak about one Fairfax. One Fairfax is a joke when you divide our community like this. So look in your hearts and listen to these people. We are parents, and we are human beings.
Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Alana Willett. Alana Willett.
Hi. I’m a student at Fairfax County Public Schools currently. I’m not a parent of a child that has already graduated some years ago or a parent who has graduated from the school some years ago. I am a current student at Fairfax County, and I’m just saying, that’s not, these things that you are claiming about our libraries aren’t true. We’re not being exposed to any information that is unnecessary. Why are you calling me a liar when I’m a student? What?
Ma’am.
I’m, I’m, I’m a student at this, at this school. I’ve been through the education system. I’ve wasn’t, I’m Asian and I’m white. I’ve been a part of the percentages that you guys have been mentioning over and over and over, and this is not what’s happening in our school system. In fact, I feel like there needs to be more education on FLE curriculum in general because all we are learning is about anatomy. That’s it. I know more about the anatomy of others than I do myself, and that’s, that’s just unnecessary in general.
Ms. Willett, if you just pause for just a minute, I’d like to remind our audience that our speaker has two minutes. We’d like to hear from her. Please allow her to finish.
Thank you. So, I’m just saying, I’ve been in these libraries, I’ve been in the library since elementary school. There’s nothing that is inappropriate unless you go looking for it. Our own curriculum within itself is-
Please allow our speaker her two minutes.
Our curriculum, our curriculum, our curriculum in itself, are you really bullying a seventeen-year-old girl right now? I’m just saying. It’s, it’s just, it’s ridiculous because all of you don’t know what it’s like to be a high schooler in Fairfax County at this time. You don’t know what it’s like to be treated as a high schooler in Fairfax County at this time. You don’t know what it’s like for us to have to hear these types of ridiculous things, to have, be taken back, to have steps be taken back from us when we’re trying to go forward with this. We’re trying to move forward.
Our next speaker is Radhika Murari.
Before our next speaker, I would also like to remind our speakers to address their comments to the Board, please.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just signed up, and so I’m not as well-prepared as some of the earlier speakers. I actually came to this meeting a little bit worried about safety, and I want to tell you, in the past nineteen months, I think you said, run of, I have seen exemplary work and compassion and empathy from all the teachers of my son and all the children I know in FCPS. I’ve seen my friends, who happen to be teachers, learn not only how to teach a diverse group of children, new curriculum sometimes, but learn how to do this virtually and also be able to engage with the parents and the grandparents and sometimes the aunts and uncles who sat in on these classes and address vast quantities of feedback at the end of the day about, unfortunately, everything these uncles and aunts and everyone who was sitting in in the classes thought these teachers, who sometimes have twenty years of education, advanced degrees, they were told everything they were doing wrong all through the day. So I want to be a voice of thankfulness and gratitude to you guys because I’ve seen a little bit behind the curtain, thanks to my teacher friends and parents of children who really needed a lot of help during this time. I realize you guys were thrown into this, like most of us, with absolutely no preparation. And again, I just want to thank you.
I’d like to thank everyone who came to share your comments with us this evening. The Board will take action on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan at the October 21 regular business meeting. This plan can be found on Board Docs. It is publicly available to everyone who would like to look at it. This public hearing is now adjourned, and if there are no objections, I’d like the Board, I’d like to offer the Board that we take a five-minute break and come back and resume our meeting. Thank you.
Just a reminder that after the recess, the meeting will resume with community participation. Just a reminder that after the recess, the meeting will resume with community participation.
Good evening, Chairman Bukowski, school board members. I am so glad to be back. And yeah, without further ado, here are some of the updates we’ve got from our student end. So last week, on Wednesday, we had our very first meeting of SAC, that is the Superintendent’s Advisory Council. And so for those who don’t know, we get four representatives from every high school in the county, and we really get to come together and talk about FCPS policy-related issues. And let me just say, the future for student-led advocacy in this school system is really bright. And we’ve seen so many kids who see challenges in their communities, and they’re out there ready to make a difference all across this county. And I got the chance to talk to our delegates. And as we really start to get into the groove of school, one thing that has been at the top of students’ minds for years, and that will continue to be on students’ mind this year, is mental health. A lot of people don’t know this, but my freshman year, I really struggled with my mental health. And shrouded in pent-up self-doubt, I began to lose who I was. I stopped getting out of bed. I lost the will to go to school. I lost the will to even shower or talk to my friends. And soon enough, I lost the will to be alive. I missed seventy-eight days of school in one year, and no one, at least no adult, seemed to really notice what was going on. Whenever I came back to school, the question was always, “How can you make up all this work?” But never, “How are you doing?” I ended up repeating a grade, and I had to work with dozens of school staff members and family members to get the clinical support that I so desperately needed. One of my saving graces was an FCPS-mandated suicide risk screening, something that allowed me to get help, gave me so much opportunity for growth, and fundamentally changed the course of my life. But that screening was only administered because I had fallen so far behind that I was technically repeating the ninth grade. And to this day, those screenings are only given to seventh and ninth graders. I know I’m okay because I was able to get help, and I know I had some incredible people to help me get through it. But what worries me is that there are so many people who don’t have what I did. If that could happen to me, what’s it like for the kids whose parents don’t speak English? What’s it like for the kids who have to work multiple jobs to help provide for their families? Right? I’m really fortunate to be where I am now. I’m on track to graduate on time. I have a great family, great friends, wonderful dog. And I want to emphasize one thing. As we move through this pandemic, we are facing two crises at once. When more than fifteen percent of our secondary students have reported serious thoughts of suicide, that’s a crisis. When six percent of all students have reported attempting suicide in the past year, that’s a crisis. And when a majority of our students, more than fifty percent, who don’t have any identified protective factors at home, have seriously considered suicide, that is a crisis. Keep in mind, day by day, my story is more often becoming the rule than the exception. And so students, think of the small things. If someone sits alone at lunch, sit with them. If your friend hasn’t been at school in a while, check in and ask if they’re doing okay. And if you know someone who’s being attacked for who they are, take a stand for what’s right. We have so many resources, both financial and human, at our disposal, and there is an abundance of mental health resources in this county, but many students just don’t know where to turn. With almost every student I’ve talked to about mental health- we are facing two crises at once. When more than 15% of our secondary students have reported serious thoughts of suicide, that's a crisis. When 6% of all students have reported attempting suicide in the past year, that's a crisis. And when a majority of our students, more than 50%, who don't have any identified protective factors at home, have seriously considered suicide, that is a crisis. Keep in mind, day by day, my story is more often becoming the rule than the exception. And so students, think of the small things. If someone sits alone at lunch, sit with them. If your friend hasn't been at school in a while, check in and ask if they're doing okay. And if you know someone who's being attacked for who they are, take a stand for what's right. We have so many resources, both financial and human, at our disposal. And there is an abundance of mental health resources in this county, but many students just don't know where to turn. With almost every student I've talked to about mental health, I've heard, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't know we had a school psychologist until my junior year." Or, "Our school has a social worker who can help me." So let's sit down and let's really make sure that our struggling students don't slip through the cracks. And so I just want to advertise some of the resources that are out there for our kids. In every single high school in this county, there is a full-time social worker and a full-time school psychologist who is there to help you and is available for on-demand help. And there is, of course, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and any adult or family member in your life. But if you want to talk to someone who's trusted at school, be it a counselor, be it a social worker, or be it a psychologist, what you say to them does not have to be relayed to your parents unless you mention seriously considering harming yourself or someone else. And so with that, I say thank you and good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chowdhury. Agenda item 3.02, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. Speakers must limit their remarks to no more than two minutes in length. At the conclusion of the two minutes, the microphone or video will be turned off. School board members will be listening but not responding to individual speakers. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, the budget, and boundaries. Comments targeting, criticizing, or attacking individual students will not be permitted during public meetings. Complaints regarding school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student or school-based employee. Additionally, speakers should be respectful and observe proper decorum in their statements, avoiding profanity, inappropriate gestures, shouting, giggling, and comments that run counter to the spirit and letter of the school division's nondiscrimination policy. We'd like to hear everyone respectfully. All statements should be directed to the school board, and speakers should remain at the podium until concluding their remarks. In-person speakers should wear a mask when addressing the board. We are grateful for everyone who has come today to speak to us and thank all of you for your cooperation tonight.
Our first speaker is Liam Ride.
Dear members of the school board, I'm a senior at Falls Church High School, and I would like to thank you for your time this evening and for the effort you've put in towards the community and towards the COVID policies during this pandemic. Like many, I've faced challenges related to COVID beyond my imagination. This has left me concerned with our ability to remain safe at school. Social distancing measures and hygiene that we were promised are simply not in place, and the effects of it are seen everywhere. From our buses to our hallways, cafeterias, and classrooms, compliance with COVID-19 procedures are decreasing. As the Delta variant and this pandemic has proven, it is not a matter of if there will be an increase of cases, it is a matter of when. While I appreciate the first steps undertaken by the board and administrators for a return to in-person learning, the logistical challenges of implementing and enforcing these measures remain impossible as is. It is simply too dangerous to pursue full-person education for every student, many of whom are vulnerable or have vulnerable family members. We must make available a hybrid education plan once more. We've already seen over 800 cases this last month, and this is only the beginning of our school year. Students are afraid, and the current model does not meet the needs of our school community. For the sake of those who are vulnerable, those who are paused, and those who may be sick, I urge you to revisit the plans for this year's curriculum and implement a concurrent learning model that proactively prevents the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Our next speaker is Erin Rual.
Good evening. My name is Arien. I use he/them pronouns, and I'm a queer student at FCPS. I'm also one of the lead organizers with the Pride Liberation Project, where a coalition of students working to uplift every single queer student in FCPS. I'm here today to ask you to hold books that depict queer relationships to the same standards as books that depict heterosexual relationships. Our libraries are community hubs that are at the heart of societal dialogues, including sexual intercourse. That understanding is reflected in the many books in our libraries that do depict heterosexual relationships, like John Green's Looking for Alaska, Jenny Downham's You Against Me, Simone Elks' Rules of Attraction, Cassandra Clare's City of Heavenly Fire, Stephen King's It, and Meg Cabot's Ready or Not. None of these books have been pulled from libraries in FCPS over the last couple of weeks despite their descriptions of sex. Why are we holding LGBTQIA+ literature to a different standard? The truth is, is that these attacks aren't about sex. They're about politicizing the existence of queer students. Over the last few weeks, these books have been used in political debates and attack ads, often accompanied by deeply damaging homophobic tropes like accusations of pedophilia. As students, we reject the politicization of our education. Well over 425 students from virtually every single high school in FCPS signed a letter asking you to do the same thing. I know that you are under an extreme amount of political pressure right now, but queer students and staff face that pressure every single day in our school system, where many of us have been threatened with conversion therapy, many of us have been threatened to be kicked out of our homes, and many of us are ostracized from our families for simply being who we are. Please demonstrate leadership and stop sending an exclusionary message to queer students. Stand with librarians and put Gender Queer and Long Boy back in our libraries. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ruby Persky. Ruby Persky.
Hi, I'm Ruby, and I'm an FCPS middle schooler. I wanted to say that I have a lot of friends who are LGBTQ+ and I think the best thing we can do is to love and support them for who they are. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Foglio.
Hello, I'm a proud parent of two FCPS kids. I'm here tonight to celebrate LGBTQIA+ history this month in FCPS in support of our students, librarians, teachers, staff, and school members who have been both threatened and under attack. First, I would like to say that it is so important for all our children to be seen and represented. There should be a diverse environment and representation of religion, gender, economic status, race, and sexual orientation in education through books and discussions. Diverse learning has been proven to make our students smarter, boost confidence, build empathy, and reduce prejudice. This sets them up to succeed in increasingly diverse and multicultural society. A small group of parents should not dictate what books are in our libraries. It is no surprise that the American Library Association lists the top reasons books are being challenged are because of LGBTQIA+, anti-racist, and perceived anti-police content. That is what's happening here in our school district. I trust our librarians to provide diverse and inclusive books of all groups of students for my kids to be able to read and learn on a wide variety of topics. All of this hateful and divisive rhetoric at these school board meetings not only harms our students, but fuels hate and hate-filled violence, and it must stop. Learning cannot take place if students do not feel safe or valued. I would hope that all of us would want to ensure that all our students feel valued and safe in our schools. To our school board members, I'm so very grateful for your hard work the last couple of years and during this incredibly difficult time. Thank you for all that you do for our kids and our schools.
Our next speaker is Jake Uden.
Good evening, members of the board. It disappoints me that the LGBT community, even now in 2021, is still under brutal attack from those who show no grace, empathy, or understanding. I want to thank the board and specifically Mr. Fish for representing the LGBT community and reaffirming our place here in Fairfax County last month. Three weeks ago, I received a hateful email to my FCPS email that began, "You are a disgusting human being following the ways of Satan." This person accused me of being brainwashed and of forcing my beliefs on my students. But that couldn't be farther from the truth. I have LGBTQ representation visible in my classroom, not because I wish to force kids to be gay, but because there are students out there in our classes who are just like us. They go to school every day and are often ashamed of who they are. They may be different from their classmates, but they are equally deserving of love and understanding. Many years ago, I was this ashamed child. I had zero friends and only a few positive influences in my life. Some of those people were teachers. It was those positive influences that kept me getting out of bed and carrying on, hoping things would get better. In the time since, things have gotten better, but we have a very long way to go. We need more LGBTQ+ representation in our classrooms. We must do more to show that all students are welcome and more to encourage compassion from those who refuse to understand. These attacks must stop. We must do everything we can to defeat bigotry and misinformation. Quite simply, Mr. Fish said it best last meeting when he quoted the words of Mary Griffith, whose son committed suicide after she refused to accept her son for who he was. Here's that quote again. "Before you echo hate in your homes, communities, or places of worship, please remember, a child is listening." Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Eld. Wendy Eld. Our next speaker is Heather Metz. Heather Metz. Bethany Heim.
Hello, my name is Bethany Heim, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Fairfax County Parents Association, a nonpartisan volunteer grassroots organization that seeks to ensure students are the first priority in Fairfax County public schools. Tonight, we are asking the school board to reallocate ESER III funds to provide special education students the compensatory services per the newly released U.S. Department of Education guidance. During the June public hearing, the Fairfax County Parents Association urged you to spend these funds on urgently needed services for vulnerable students, including compensatory services for special education students. Yet, the school board allocated only a half million out of 189 million ESER III dollars for special education services. That's only 0.3% of the total and equivalent to only $18 per special education student. One week ago, the U.S. Department of Education released its latest section of the Return to School roadmap. It states that the department's longstanding position has been that IEP teams are the appropriate vehicle for addressing the needs for and extent of compensatory services to address the child's needs based on any failure or inability to provide appropriate services due to circumstances such as teacher strikes, natural disasters, and pandemics. The guidance notes that state recovery services are not the same as compensatory services, and Secretary Cardona is strongly encouraging IEP teams to proactively provide compensatory services in order to avoid costly legal battles in special education due process. To provide these services, your IEP teams need funding. This is exactly what ESER III funding is for. Please spend it on our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lydia Lutt.
Good evening, members of the board. I appreciate this chance to speak to you. My name is Lydia Lutt. I am a resident of Fairfax County, and my two sons attend Bellevue Elementary. Rory is eight, and Jack is almost 10. I'm here to ask you to change an FCPS COVID policy that is putting children, staff, and bus drivers at unnecessary risk. Under current FCPS policy, when a potential close contact is identified, if that child doesn't show any symptoms of COVID, they complete the school day and ride the bus home as normal. The next day, they must begin a 10- to 14-day quarantine. The rationale is that it's just too disruptive to some families and guardians to have to pick up their child from school. This policy just does not make sense. If potential close contacts are deemed a public health risk and they must quarantine, then they need to be removed from school as soon as they are identified as a potential risk. One family's burden of an early pickup is far less than the potential harm done to other students and staff in the school and the children and bus drivers riding with them. If there are extenuating circumstances, deal with them on a case-by-case basis. But overall, the policy needs to be that these children need to go. I am here because two weeks ago, my sons were exposed unnecessarily to a child riding the bus home with them who my principal had already deemed a potential close contact. Someone that FCPS found to be too much of a threat to ride the bus the next morning or to be in school for the next two weeks. FCPS officials, including my principal, Region III administration, and Assistant Superintendent Michelle Boyd, all defend this policy and see no problem with it. Every parent I've spoken with has a problem with it, and I hope you do too. Please change the policy.
Our next speaker is Tina Williams.
Good evening, Chairperson Pukarski, school board members, Dr. Braybrand, and leadership in our community. I'm Tina Williams, president of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers Union. We're happy to see the motion to establish a full-time staff person to manage public health-related work in our school, and we thank Dr. Boyd for her work. We look forward to continued work with you on ways to address the sub-s shortage, compensation for all staff, and planning time that has been redirected. Teachers and instructional support staff require time in the school day to plan and prepare for instruction. This time must be protected as time dedicated for student learning and success outcomes are important. The FCFT continues to hear from members that their excess workloads and increasing demands are extending their workdays. We look forward to working together to resolve these issues. I am also here today to show support of our public education, our school district, our school board, and our LGBTQIA+ students and staff and our wonderful librarians who have been under attack. Ensuring the safety and well-being of our children is the center of education. Our work in education is to support every child in being curious, independent, critical thinkers who possess a love of learning, will stand up for their rights and beliefs, can define what success means to them, and are good global citizens. Human beings who value, respect, and seek purpose in themselves which can enable them to recognize and uphold it in others. Our role is to help our children understand that there is space in this world for...
Our next speaker is Bernard Fennell.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all of us tonight. I'm not an activist. I've never spoken to a school board meeting before or even attended a school board meeting before. I'd rather be watching football right now if I could. But there's important issues in our community, and I want to address them. I'm a parent in the district. I have two children who've gone through FCPS. One's in college, one's a junior at Langley High School. I'm married, been married for 27 years, to a woman, no less. And my kids and my wife were all conventionally gendered and were heterosexual. So I'm not here speaking on behalf of a marginalized community. I'm speaking on behalf of a parent in a community who wants to talk about what kind of community I want to live in. After our last meeting, I heard about the two books that have been pulled, Gender Queer and Long Boy. And of course, having heard the scare talk, I decided to read them. So I read them from cover to cover, which I doubt most people in this room have. They're big, sweet books. Big, hearted, poignant, funny at times. There are a couple moments, if you take out context, sound scary, but really aren't anything that is central to the book. Certainly, they are not promoting pedophilia. The books are no less or more inappropriate than you could see on TV shows our kids watch, Rick and Morty, American Dad, other kinds of satire, things they see online. The kids aren't going to be hurt by these books, but they might grow a little. They might grow an appreciation for the struggles people deal with in dealing with complicated issues of class, race, gender, and sexuality. So I want you to think about the children when you look at these books. But don't just think about the few children who might find an uncomfortable moment in these books or the parents who might have to answer an awkward question. Think about the children who are marginalized and who will see removing these books as spending them as an attack on them, as telling them that they are not welcome in this community. spending them as an attack on them, as telling them that they are not welcome in this community. Well, I want to live in a community where those people aren't welcome, so...
As a mom, I'm here to tell you, you have one job: provide education for the children of Fairfax County with the best degree of academic excellence possible. It is not to expose children to your political or ideological viewpoints. It is not to expose children to critical race theory or cull their social and emotional learning data by screening them 36 times from K through 12th grade with our money going to AG Merrick Garland's $1.8 million contract to his son-in-law. It is not to expose children to sexually explicit material in the classroom or in the library. Politicizing the education of children is bad. Indoctrinating a child to look at each other as oppressors or oppressed as critical race theory put into practice demands is bad. Porn for kids is bad! You consistently demonstrate your hostility to parental concerns. You suppress, mock, or wholly ignore the voice of parents. It is the go-to position of this board. You are teaching our children to hate their country. You are teaching our children revisionist history. You are peddling porn to kids. You do not value diversity unless it is your approved, then compelled definition. You do not value inclusion. You pervert the very meaning by excluding parents who do not toe your ideological line. You do not value equity. You roll over those who have deeply held religious, cultural, or patriotic values. You are destroying our community and our country. We, the parents, we, the people, are mad as hell, and we're not going to take it anymore. We're not going anywhere. For years on this board, I fought to increase the visibility of what is in our curriculum. I am telling you, stop peddling porn to our kids. It's child abuse. Stop making children hate each other. It's racist. Stop teaching our children revisionist history.
Our next speaker is Laura Docherty.
Labels. I'm a 40-year resident of Fairfax County, an FCPS graduate, mother of an FCPS student, white, middle-aged, Christian, bisexual. We all hold labels, yet they do not hold the sum of who we are. Our children also hold many, sometimes contradictory, labels. Some temporary, like their grade level; some permanent, like their racial identity; some labels waiting to be understood and claimed; some are hidden due to fear of bullying and rejection. I'm alarmed but not surprised inclusive books are being targeted, some about the LGBTQ+ experience, some buying about Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. The normalization of these fictional and nonfictional lives is vilified, as if only certain voices should be heard and one story told. Our students need literature that speak to all students, especially those belittled and shut out due to their differences from the norm. These are valid, complete human beings deserving of library content that respects that truth. I'm proud that our school librarians work to provide resources for our diverse student population, allowing students to see themselves, to learn from and understand each other. I pray someday our kids will all be seen without labels, without being considered abnormal and as equal members of society. Concealing facts from kids about their nation's history and about the lived experience of others only serves to deepen the divide between us all. Thank you.
We'll now move to our waitlist.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Chaya Mahanti Ortiz. My pronouns are she/her/hers. I am a happy Fairfax resident and the mother of two young men who graduated from Robinson Secondary School. As a child, I absolutely loved to read. Reading was my escape from a very harsh reality. Through reading, I was able to travel the world. I was able to go back in time. I was able to see futures yet imagined. And I was so thrilled that my boys also learned to love reading. In their school in California, before we moved to Virginia, they were the youngest kids in the school to read the entire Harry Potter series. Books take us places. Books teach us. My eldest son, perhaps if he had had the opportunity to read books about transgender individuals, it would not have taken him years to come out to me as a trans man. He knew from the time he was seven that he was transgender, but he did not know how to explain it to anybody. Perhaps if he had read books about people like him, he would have realized there was nothing wrong with him. Perhaps if he had read books about people like him, he would not have tried to commit suicide on multiple occasions. I commend everything that this board has done and the past boards to bring LGBTQ+ identities to the forefront. This is why I live here. This is why I am not going anywhere. This is why my friends, who support my child, who support our community, are not going anywhere. I would encourage the board to thoroughly look at the books because I am positive that what people are saying about them is an example of fear mong...
Anna Persky. This is our last speaker.
Hi, my name's Anna Stoli-Persky. I'm an FCPS parent, and I want to first of all, thank you all for your work on the board. From deep in my heart, thank you. Secondly, I'm here to say that we've seen in the past few weeks an angry vitriol from outsiders and some people from within Fairfax County Public Schools that has clearly made our marginalized students, particularly our LGBTQ+ students, feel under attack. I'm here to say, there's another side of FCPS that stands by and not against our LGBTQIA+ plus students. I want to tell our LGBTQ students and families, we're the families, friends, teachers, administrators, and school board members who have opened doors and open homes and open hearts. We will do everything we can to protect you and support you as you grow into the amazing human beings you will be. I want to encourage other families, teachers, administrators to be louder and prouder in letting our LGBTQ students know that we know what great gifts you have to offer the world, and that any attempt to block you makes us sick with worry and sadness, and that we will not stand silently by. I want to tell you that we are here for you, and we love you. Thank you.
Tonight, we have three video testimonies. Our first video is Willow Woike.
Good evening. My name is Willow Woike, she/her/hers. I'm a trans woman, president of the Transgender Education Association, and on the board of FCPS Pride. I'm also proud to have my fourth rising junior through the ranks of FCPS schools. At the last school board meeting, speakers came to talk about some diverse books. I often speak to this board in support of our LGBTQIA+ students. This is LGBTQIA+ History Month, and I want to speak about school librarians. A few years ago, my child joined a sport, and I, as a trans woman and parent, had to navigate my fears about being accepted by the other parents on the team. At that time, I spoke at another school board meeting during a previous attempt to censor diverse books. Another parent on the team was watching that meeting and just happened to be a school librarian. At the next practice, they thanked me for speaking out. I suddenly felt accepted, and I got to learn a little about what school librarians do. School librarians have the difficult job of going through all of the books available and finding books that allow the students to see themselves or to see their friends in new ways, whether a child is Black, or Native American, or neurodiverse, or disabled, or adopted, or Hispanic, or South Asian, or come from a different family structure, or homeless, or a trans, or a multitude of other ways. Kids are unique. They should be able to see themselves in the books, in the library. School librarians need to meet the needs of all students and motivate them to read. They work with other school librarians, finding the best-written, most-appropriate, most-diverse material, so all students can go to the library and find something that reflects their life or even inspires them. I stand with the school librarians. I stand against censorship.
Our next video is Andrea Lewis.
I'm a mother of two FCPS students and a 20-year resident of Springfield, Virginia. Today, I first want to publicly commend our FCPS staff, from the teachers and principals to the librarians and the counselors, for their efforts to create a welcoming and inclusive environment in our schools. This county includes people from various cultures, religions, and orientations, so it can be a challenge to support our kids as they grow into adulthood. But in my experience, FCPS does a great job of helping our kids build a healthy sense of self-respect and respect for others through classroom learning, counseling sessions, and through reading of books. So I was surprised when I heard about the disruption of the last school board meeting that happened when members of the community requested a ban on two approved library books. They claimed that these books included porn and pedophilia. I was also surprised to learn that several attendees began to chant religious prayers to the Archangel Saint Michael. I would like to make a few observations about these events. First, the book citations that were read aloud were pulled out of context and were mischaracterized. Context matters. There was no pedophilia in these books, and this is according to the Washington Post, Patch.com, and the authors themselves. These books are included on our shelves because they tell a larger, meaningful story. They don't instruct the readers to harm themselves or others. Secondly, I want to say, religious chants have no place in our public buildings. Such acts are unacceptable and unconstitutional. I have no more right to pray to the Hawaiian Spirit of Thunder or the goddess Osiris. No religion should expect precedent over another one in these United States. Let's please keep FCPS a welcoming and inclusive place.
Our next video is Lorne McCahey.
I appreciate the steps that health department staff and school staff are taking to try to prevent COVID from spreading further among our children. Current policies for notifications and for household member testing are inadequate and prevent schools from being safe places. You might think COVID cases in our schools are surprisingly low. I learned this week that the case count doesn't include students like my son. He tested positive on a Friday after two days of being absent, so he was considered to have zero contacts at school. His school community did not even receive a case notification that week, as he was considered not at school during his infectious period. This is true for all cases on Mondays, as they've been away from school for two days. Therefore, the school's figures for COVID cases are radical under counts. All student cases should be counted, and communities should be notified. My son had no contact with anyone outside of school between Monday and Friday last week. Either he caught COVID from one of the nurses who swabbed him for it, or he caught it at school on Monday or Tuesday. The health department only contact traces back two days when he'd been absent, so only his siblings and parents were considered close contacts. His sister is in quarantine for 14 days. His vaccinated brother was cleared to return to school within four hours, despite the fact that vaccinated people can still catch and transmit COVID. I am fortunate that my children have separate bedrooms, and our house has more than one bathroom, so we were able to enforce a strict isolation between my kids. Many families aren't so lucky. Current policies allow for a vaccinated sibling to share a bedroom overnight with a COVID-positive family member, then head directly into classrooms the next morning. The CDC recommends testing for all close contacts three to five days after exposure. FCPS should at least require testing for members of the same household.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and offering their public testimony. Agenda item 4.02, Vaccine Accessibility, and I call on Ms. Maron.
Thank you. I ask for unanimous consent to withdraw this motion.
Without objection, that motion is withdrawn. Agenda item 4.03, Public Health Position, I call on Ms. Maron for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to direct the superintendent to establish a staff position in the Department of Special Services to support the Assistant Superintendent in managing public health-related work in the school division.
Is there a second?
Second.
That motion is seconded by Dr. Anderson. Ms. Maron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I do want to tie together this motion with the one that was previously just removed because it is all connected to our public health work in keeping our students and staff safe during COVID. So first, I would like to speak to that...
Ms. Maron, if you could just wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'd like to remind everybody to please exit quietly so we can continue conducting our business. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I made these two motions, the genesis came to me about three weeks ago in mid-September, after I spent the preceding weeks at the start of the school year seeking information to help constituents whose children were not age-eligible for a vaccine and were home on pause for connections to COVID cases in their classes. Since then, I'm glad to see that the school division has done much work outside of its mission to educate students, to assist and really lead public health work to mitigate COVID among students and staff. So since putting force this motion, I have been heartened to see the progress in engaging partners done by the superintendent and Dr. Boyd and other staff, and I'm eager to see the plan that I've been informed of is going to be now forthcoming in a public board work session on October 19th. I do want to say again, the genesis, though, for this first motion about vaccine convenings was because there are people outside of the school systems who are doing tremendous work, like the First Baptist Church of Vienna, who with two other partners, put 5,000 COVID shots into arms. There are many public partners in our community such as this, and I look forward to seeing that plan on October 19th. For the motion at hand about the staff position, again, our school system has gone above and beyond our mission. We have taken on work of epic proportions, from creating systems to transfer vaccine records over to the county health department, to vetting and hopefully hiring very soon a company that will do COVID testing and COVID vaccination, to training on all sorts of mitigation efforts. None of this is really our mission, our mission to educate children, but it is what we do because we care for children, we care for our staff, and we want to make them safe. However, the fact that the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Student Services? Sorry. Special Services, thank you. The fact that the Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, both oversees the health work as well as key services like special education, is too much for one person to bear. Just as evidence and point, one of our last work sessions, our Assistant Superintendent spent the morning talking about the special education audit, and then went to the afternoon to talk to us about the return to school and instructional operation work. It is incumbent on us that we make this position available, and other jurisdictions are doing this. Montgomery County has already done this. And I also want to point out that, as was mentioned in our previous work session, there are ample revenues from the state to help with many public services. Public health needs to be a priority if we want our public schools to function in this era going forward. So I hope my board colleagues will join me in this motion and in helping our staff right-size the responsibility that is not going away anytime soon. I do want to mention that the budget source for this position would be from the FCPS staffing reserve because it will be an ongoing position. This is not a one-time thing, which would, you know, be a potential ESER fund. It would come from the staffing reserve, and it's estimated at about $150,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your second?
I would, but I actually thought I was seconding a slightly different proposal, which I'll share in my comments. Obviously, we have provided ESER funds to the principals in order to help to bear the burden of some of the administrative COVID-related work that they've been doing, and I was under the impression we were doing the same thing for the Assistant Superintendent of Special Services. My thinking is that I believe that this would be a temporary position with the utilization of ESER funds, and that it would not necessarily be, it would not be a medical professional, because we have the public health office that does that in our county, but it would be a coordinator to help ease the burden of that position, so that Dr. Boyd can attend to more mission-critical tasks. I've talked to probably more than half of you about this, but I'm feeling a little bit conflicted based on the comments that were just shared just now, so I am not quite sure where I stand on kind of the original motion, because some of the pieces are new to me at this moment, in terms of this being funded from reserve funds. So I'm going to leave it there right now with a big question mark.
Ms. Maron, would you like to respond to those questions?
Yes, and Dr. Anderson, I apologize for that confusion. I was just given the, I did ask for the budget request two weeks ago when I did first announce this motion, and I was informed that it was from the FCPS staffing reserve. That is what our budget department is suggesting. So I would turn to Mr. Smith or Dr. Brabran to speak further about the funding for this position.
Good evening. So yes, when we have positions that come outside of the regular budget cycle, and we don't have a revenue source for those positions, we can go to the staffing reserve, and so we would look at funding this position as a one-time position out of the staffing reserve. Any funding that comes out of the staffing reserve is a one-time position. And then if we were going to look at this down the road, we would have to put it into the base moving forward.
I am so sorry to do my inquiries at this point.
If we may, Dr. Anderson, I have you down as the list of speakers, so what I'd like to do is go ahead and take comment from the board members on this.
If I may, as the second of this motion, I do have some confusion. I'd like to at least clarify something to see if I want to continue my second of this motion. I don't know if it's too late to do that, so thank you. So I guess the place that I'm thinking is if we are, if we're putting this position together to be a temporary position, why not utilize ESER funds in the way that we are doing for our schools? Why kind of build this into the operational position, into the staffing reserve? I'm so sorry, this is very confusing to me at this moment.
So at this point, all of our ESER dollars have been allocated, so the ESER positions that we've placed in our ESER grant were identified by the board, and again, those dollars have been fully allocated across the division. And when we look at positions like this that come up, again, off-budget cycle, we would look at using the staffing reserve. That does not place the position into the base budget. So using the staffing reserve would simply be a one-time, one-year position, because we're using that one-time-only money.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. If you don't mind, I will, I'm just going to ask to let our other board members speak to this motion as is, and if there's an amendment that you need to propose at some point, we can do that. Dr. Anderson, I have you down on the list, or if anyone else wants to propose an amendment. So we have the motion on the table. I want to call Ms. McLaughlin to speak, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. A couple things. First of all, Ms. Maron, I really appreciate you bringing this to the board. I do have some questions for Dr. Brabran. As you are hopefully aware, the interim superintendent of Montgomery County Public Schools, Ms. McKnight, or Dr. McKnight, laid out a plan that The Washington Post covered, and it did talk about having a division-wide public health officer, having the community working group to help inform the challenges that the community is facing. And so I just wanted to know, did you happen to talk with her at all about her decision to do that, especially given she's an interim, and if she might have given you some thinking on that?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to talk to Monica yet. I'm definitely going to do it. I saw that coverage, and, you know, I think even part of this discussion today, both of these, ESER or this, is temporary, but I do want to spend time to really make sure that we thoughtfully create the right kind of position to support our Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, as you know, but I'm just sharing it with the public. She's in charge of health-related services in schools and special education. Those are huge, huge responsibilities, and this pandemic has required, frankly, the majority of her time being, having to be focused on that instead of directing and leading our special education colleagues. So I know it's a little bit of a debate right now, it's temporary, and I'm not ready to commit that it would be permanent, I'm not sure. I wish I had the crystal ball on the pandemic, but I definitely believe it's critical right now, and I think it will still be critical this year to even inform our planning for next year, which I think will be even farther along out of the pandemic, but we're still going to have some pandemic-related impacts. One thing, just while we're in this conversation, that I do want to know, and your advocacy's been so key, the county did share just in the last week that they are funding 82 new nurses to come into our schools and support our schools directly. That's, I know, a longstanding goal for you, I'm glad to see it getting achieved. In my final year here, we need that additional support, but we need additional staff to help us through this pandemic, and we'll really work, and I will talk to Montgomery County a little bit more about how they've crafted their position.
I appreciate that. The next question I have is that I do know that on Dr. Boyd's team, she has Leah Skirpski and Lorraine Trauton, who've been our current FCPS staff that liaises with the public health department. So how might this new position, you know, sort of interact or interface with those two existing positions?
Yeah. We are creating the job description around that to try to figure out those interactions and working carefully with Dr. Boyd and Mr. Smith and the HR team. I will tell you, though, when you think about 200 schools, two people trying to coordinate all of that, it's just overwhelming in the pandemic. So I don't think that's a big enough health team for a system this size, and that's one of the reasons, again, that, you know, we are very supportive of this motion that Ms. Maron has put forward. Right now, by the way, Dr. Boyd and I are in the middle of convening a NOVA, a pediatrician state leadership, right here locally, Dr. Martin, who's president of the State Chapter of the American Association of Pediatrics, the Fairfax County Health Department. And we are meeting regularly. We met two weeks ago, we met today, we're meeting next week. We know, and I've shared with all of them, that we need to have a broad-based community plan that I need to share with this community October 19th. We may not have every question answered, every single question, but we need a broad, strong plan to share, so our community is ready for what we know is a lot of work ahead. Good news that we think the vaccination for five- to 11-year-olds is going to be available, but we have vaccination and testing in front of us, and we're going to need that additional support for Dr. Boyd as we ramp up both of those things in our school system.
So I do want to share with you, Dr. Brabran and my colleagues, that I have tremendous respect for Dr. Boyd. I have really enjoyed how hard she's working and the great work in general that she's brought to the position, being so new to FCPS. At the heart of this motion in front of us, I told Ms. Maron, I very much believe in the need. My concern is the board giving you direction that I'm a little worried isn't clear enough, and you and I worked together now for four-plus years, and one of the things you remind us is, I can't read the minds of 12 people, and if I don't know what you guys are asking of me, then you might be upset by what you get. And so I think what I would say to Ms. Maron and Dr. Anderson is, I really like the idea of maybe amending this language, where we would be asking the superintendent to bring back a proposal to the board on how he might enhance the staffing needs within Department of Special Services to deal with the COVID and our public health challenges. I think that way, we kind of allow for ourselves to get it back to us and make sure we're on the same page with the superintendent, because I also respectfully disagree with something that Mr. Smith said. ESER funds, as we know from our CFO, Lee Burden, that was what we filed with the state, and it can be amended at any time. So to say that all the ESER funds are all allocated for, it's half technically true, half technically not exactly true. And I'm not saying that Mr. Smith's trying to say something isn't true or not true, I'm just saying that there is the ability to amend it and reallocate ESER funds if we believe something more important has come to the fold. So I do appreciate that Mr. Smith's trying to say the status of where it is, but that's why I like the idea of this board directing you to bring us a proposal, and it would allow you to also then go talk with the superintendent at Montgomery County and find out, because going to a director of public health is a very big, different leap than adding additional staff person to Dr. Boyd's team. And so I look forward to hearing what all the rest of you have to say, but that's kind of where my thinking is right now. Love where Ms. Maron's coming from, but I want to make sure we direct the superintendent the best way possible.
Dr. Brabran?
If I could, just because the budget's about 150, it's over $100,000. If you remember, there's a follow-on motion from the summer for ESER, bring it back. We really are trying to get this position up and running soon. Obviously, we'll defer to the will of the board. I certainly can commit tonight, regardless of the way you word the final resolution, that a copy of the job description before I post it is made available, and if there are board concerns or questions around it, let me know. But I will say, the need is real, the urgency is real. I really do want to get this available as soon as we can, and glad to share it with you before it's something that we make public. But again, we'll listen to board conversation and hope to have some forward motion tonight, if you're willing. Thanks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, and I'm pleased to be able to follow my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, for a couple of reasons. First, two weeks ago, we had a work session, and at that work session, Dr. Brabran, you were very clear that you were planning on doing this without any board action, that you were looking at the staffing to provide the supports to Dr. Boyd, so that Dr. Boyd could focus on the special education piece of her work. And so I'm a little confused as to why we are having this come to us today. The second reason is that the motion as drafted is a permanent position, and it's not clear, and God willing, we will not be in a permanent condition of a pandemic. And the way that this is funded is from the staffing reserve. That staffing reserve is used so that we can supplement educational personnel in our classrooms. It is not typically a reserve that we utilize for central staff. There's another piece, too, and that is the clear delineation of roles and responsibilities between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, and the state. And when you look at the state code, the state code clearly states that the Board of Health has the responsibility for promulgating regulations pertaining to the implementation of school immunization law and standards of immunization. The state health commissioner is the executive officer for the state Board of Health, and the local health director is responsible for providing assistance in implementing this Chapter II school divisions. The state code also says that the requirements shall be set forth in state regulations, and we know that for this, but it also then goes on to say that there will be, from the local boards, that they are to work with their community to develop a plan. The state board shall review annually and make recommendations for changes every year, but that they will also have a centralized database for immunizations, something that I know that you're working with our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors side, and that there will be mechanism for sharing that data, and that there will also be the ability, this is important, of having work with the Board of Nursing and the state board, for the administration of influenza vaccines for minors by licensed pharmacists, registered nurses, licensed practical nurses, or emergency medical. All of this falls in the Health Department's remit. It talks about the local board shall actively participate, I'm sorry, let me pull it up. The local board shall actively participate with community representatives in the formulation of a comprehensive plan for the development, coordination, and evaluation of local health services. Systems shall make formal recommendations to the governing body or authorities, at least annually, in a comprehensive plan, and that it'll be the responsibility of the local health director to attend the meetings of the board, of this advisory board, to provide information and to participate in the development of it. The reason I raise this tonight is because I do think that we need to have closer coordination. I do think that we have a role in this, but that the primary role is that of the Board of Supervisors. They recognize that role with the establishment of the additional nurses. So what I do appreciate, that this is a good idea, but we need to make sure that we have clear delineations of roles and responsibilities. We have a plan on how things will be implemented, and so I would suggest that it would be more fruitful for you to come back to us with a plan that addresses those clear roles and responsibilities, and how we're going to get things done, and also not take from our teaching reserve to fund it. Thank you.
Ms. Kuzkamara? No?
Okay.
All right. I do want to thank Ms. Maron for bringing this forward, but I am also concerned because there are some clear lines, and Virginia is a very particular about how we dole out authority. We are a Dillon Rule state, which is my understanding means that if we have not been specifically given the authority, we don't have it. And as Ms. Corbett Sanders just outlined, there are some lines between the school system and the Health Department that we really do have to respect. I had hoped at the work session that we had a few weeks ago, when Ms. Maron brought a similar idea forward, I said to you, Dr. Brabran, can you give us a plan on how to do this? I do believe that this is clearly operational. I don't know what or how many people are in Dr. Boyd's office and who's doing what, and so only you have that information. I do think that it is critical for us to know that we are authorizing the right thing, because I think that it is too easy to have a blurred line, and when we don't have clear duties, something gets dropped, right? The Health Department or the county could expect us to be taking care of something, and then, because we have this new position and there's confusion, and we don't even have a job description at this point, so then they rely on what they think we're doing, and in the meantime, we've got children and families falling through the cracks. That is essentially, oh my goodness, that is essentially my worry. I do want to avoid those misunderstandings, and I don't, I don't think that this was the intent, but I do want to make sure that we send the right message to the community, that we have a clear role, so that when we publish a job description, everybody understands, and they can have an opportunity to comment on that and say, well, how does that fit with, you know, the county health department? you know, the county Health Department and the roles and clarification? My fear here is that we're sort of putting the cart before the horse. We recognized the need two weeks ago when we started talking about it, but we didn't get a plan. We still don't have a job description. We're talking about staff reserve. It doesn't say temporary. I believe that it should say temporary, and then we send the wrong message to the community. So, for that reason, I really would like to get that plan first and then vote on this. I'm actually surprised, I was actually surprised to see that this was on the agenda today, because I did ask for a plan when we had a work session, and I haven't seen any additional information other than talking about what is being done in Maryland, and they are not a Dillon Rule state. So, I really do think that we have to be careful, and for that reason, I would ask that we get that plan before we vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzgama. Mr. Frisch?
Thank you. I support this motion for much the same reason I supported motions at our previous board meeting, different issues entirely, but I think it's important to put the weight of the board behind something like this. And I'm comfortable doing that precisely because the motion is broad enough for Dr. Boyd and Dr. Braybrand to use this position in a way that helps to coordinate our work on public health-related issues, as we work with our county counterparts and everybody else who's involved in this. Let's be clear about the language here. No usurpation, fun word, here for county authority, or our state stakeholders, or anybody in the public health world. This is simply assisting Dr. Boyd's current work on public health-related matters, and I think that's something I can get behind. And I am comfortable that Dr. Boyd will put this person right to work, because we need the help. Thank you.
Mr. Renat Kofax?
Thank you. Dr. Braybrand, some of my colleagues have already asked some of my questions, but I guess from you, and it feels like you're in the process, because that's my primary question to you. What do you need? What does Dr. Boyd need? And how can we work, as some of my colleagues talked about, with county officials? Can we, you know, is there a way they can continue, they can help us more? Or do we need, do you feel that the school system should absorb this position and create a new one?
Well, one thing I'd say, I think it's important to frame, this isn't about, and we can be clear in the job description, it's certainly not about taking over the Health Department's responsibilities at all. We'd be absolutely clear about that. But we are in a temporary situation that's now gone a year, where we have an assistant superintendent who's outstanding, who is not going to be able to sustain this and lead the special education work this board has. That's my honest appraisal of this. The special ed audit has taken place. There is a lot of work about to be placed on her, and I'm worried she will reach a breaking point, and we will not have. We need to keep our best and brightest here in FCPS, and at least temporarily, I do believe she needs the position. And again, as we've shared tonight, we're not proposing it would be permanent. I'm not ready to say that it's, I don't know. It may need to be this year and one more year after, to be honest. If I was just being honest right now in this moment, I don't know for sure. I think partly it's going to be, how does the pandemic go over the next six months? But I know she's overwhelmed. I know she works seven days a week. I know I call her every Saturday and Sunday. She works all the time. The staff's exhausted, and I've got to get her help if we're going to pull together the vaccination and testing work in front of us over the next few months. So, there is that urgency of it. But I totally agree with what board members are saying. I think we've developed a great relationship with the Health Department, and in no way creating this position is to subsume any responsibilities they have. Again, ultimately, you all will decide, but I certainly can make sure before I post anything that the board has it. And if the majority of the board was not comfortable with this job description, I would bring it back for your review. But again, I will listen to the rest of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this point, I would like to support my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, who said to bring a plan for you, is that what you're saying? To bring a proposal to us forward, and then have a, you know, I don't need to know if it needs to be a vote like this, just kind of a simple approval. Because I'm still, I want to know, I want to be able to support you and the best, you and Dr. Boyd in the best way possible. Is it a coordinator position? Is it a coordinator and a senior? And I think that way, we know what we're doing, and we all believe this is temporary, and if it turns out to be different, then we'll do that. But at this point, I don't want to just direct a single position with dollars attached until you bring us something more in detail. And I think you said this question, because I said, is there any, my other one question, was there any way you think you could arrange current staff to assume some of these responsibilities?
I've certainly looked at that. I've looked at it every way to Sunday, and I don't believe that's something I can do. I'll simply say this, in the end, the board will decide what the board decides, but you could either support today passing this with the note that I would bring you the update of the job description on the 19th. I'm doing my return-to-school update to you all then, right? Or if you don't feel comfortable that you can pass it tonight, that you could pass it at the following meeting, which is two days after the work session. I'd love to get it going and finalize it tonight, but obviously, I mean, the board will decide. In any event, I'm certainly willing to share that position more scoped out at the work session briefly. I hope it'll be brief, so that you can feel assured that it's not crossing into lines where it should not. Thanks.
I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand, but I do have confidence in you and your team that you'll bring us this forward. So, I too am a little confused why we're here tonight, when I know that's what you're doing, and that's your job anyway. So, thank you, and I'll wait to see if anybody brings, if you're going to bring that proposal. I'll be happy to second that for you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. We certainly heard a lot of disagreement here tonight from the folks in the audience. I can tell you the one thing that about every constituent in the Springfield district believes, which is, we've got to do better here. We're just consistently hearing from folks that there are big gaps in support. We're even heard from parents tonight, who said that we have got to do a better job of getting children identified, parents notified, and getting our kids safely back to school.
Dr. Braybrand, you said we needed help. We totally agree with you. I look at the people that we've seen managing the COVID emergency, now second round of the pandemic, and we have amazing people who had other jobs before the pandemic. We have Ms. Skirpski, who's data management, and we have Ms. Trouton, who is Health Services Program Coordinator. All of the many things that our schools do to interact on daily, regular, kids who need meds, kids who need insulin, kids who, God forbid, need an EpiPen, all of that, those were full-time, more than, I would argue, full-time jobs before February of 2020 ever came around. We have not hired a single person, we've hired somebody to manage Esser money, which is incredibly important, but we have not hired somebody to manage what we had hoped we'd be done with now. And so, I 100%, we, all the time, I see in FCPS, we eliminate, we reclassify, we change positions. If this is something that needs to ebb and flow, great. But I think this is one of those places, you're clearly identifying that you have a need. We want to be able to give voice to that and support the community, support you. This seems like another win-win, so Ms. Maron, you have my support.
Ms. Somesh?
Yeah, thank you. I'm also feeling more comfortable with the proposal, but I do want to say, I'm also mindful that, I guess sometimes it's worth looking past the hills and knowing that if something needs to get done, it needs to get done. And we're going to, likely what's going to happen is we're going to ask, is Dr. Braybrand going to come up with a proposal? He's going to bring the proposal. We're going to approve the proposal, and we're going to move forward with the hire. So, that leads me to think that time and energy is better spent elsewhere, if we already know to this degree that the need exists. I tend to really hate growing central office. I think that's, I think you guys know that by now, but I see value in this role specifically because it allows Dr. Boyd to focus her energies on mental health and special ed, which are both, you know, areas of dire need, as we know, particularly because of the pandemic. And I also think we'd benefit from a fresh set of eyes on the health situation and being responsive to constituents, you know, given the circumstances. So, in addition, of course, to always wanting to support the creative thinking and initiative of my colleagues, and I'm really grateful to Ms. Maron for bringing it, so I say that to say, this wasn't planned, so that colleagues don't get upset with me, but based on the discussion, I would suggest that we amend this, just to include that it's a one-year position in explicit language, so that folks have that understanding, and it's codified as we move forward. So, I would move to amend that we say, establish a one-year staff position, and I suppose that could be further explored in the future, but.
Can we get, can we update this motion? And is there a second to that amendment? That motion? Why don't we wait a second? Let's get it.
I move to amend, to establish a, yeah, to direct the superintendent to establish a one-year staff position, and then the rest of it.
Do we have a second to that amendment? Okay, that amendment fails. Back to the main motion. Do you have other comments, Ms. Somesh?
No, I mean, I'm trying to gather where folks are at. I thought, you know, folks are saying they want this to be temporary. That's fine. I know there was concern around managing versus coordinating, perhaps, to align with the concerns around the Dillon Rule and statutes and whatnot. If someone else wants to propose that amendment, that's fine, but I'm, you know, trying to think of how we can incorporate what people are saying here into the language of this, because I think we all agree that the intention and the need is there. But, I mean, I'll leave it at that, if folks don't want my amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Somesh. Ms. Eismerheiser, do you want to take your turn?
Yeah, just briefly, Dr. Braybrand, let me ask you a couple of questions. Sorry, I know it's late. First, I appreciate this being brought forth. I think I heard you say that you're in the process of hiring somebody, not hiring, you've been looking at this and had made a decision that you operationally thought you needed somebody in this position to support Dr. Boyd's work. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, if you'd kind of operationally made that decision, and this doesn't pass, what does that say to you then?
You know. No. I'm deciding how much I'm going to just pour out. We're in a pandemic, we're struggling, and you and I will regret if Dr. Boyd is not part of our division. She's been a superhero. She needs help. She's asked her supervisor, Dr. Presidio. Dr. Presidio came to me, we were working on this before it came up, and to be authentic partner, I didn't say, stay out of my business, I'm going to put my own operating person in anyway. It's, let's work with the board. I knew a motion was coming from the work session. I'd love to partner. I need help. She needs help. It doesn't have to be forever. It does need to be this year, for sure. Next year, maybe, to be honest to God. I just don't know yet, but she needs help. And if we don't get her help, I think you're going to come to me and say, where's the plan? Where's this? Where's that? There's not going to be, and I'm not saying it to be hyperbolic. I haven't been, I don't think I've been that way, but she is at the brink, and I need to give her help. That's all. I'll show you the job description now, well, as soon as it's done. I think it's almost done, before I post it. And if there was a majority of board members with concerns about roles or responsibilities in it, please let me know. But it's just, she needs help. I don't know what I would do. I'd be stumped. I'd want to really go ahead and still do something, but I also would feel, after bringing it here, and if it were denied, that it would be, in a sense, not following the will of the board, and would be disrespectful as a professional relationship between the superintendent and you all. So, that's where my thoughts are.
I ask that question because I hear all my colleagues, and everyone has very fair comments and very fair thoughts, and I respect that. But my personal opinion is, I feel like we're in the middle of a pandemic, and from my own personal opinion, special education has needed somebody desperately for at least 10 years, and somebody like Dr. Boyd. And I personally feel like she 100% needs to be freed up to focus on special education. It has been in crisis for way too long. I would love to see you bring the very reasonable requests that my colleagues are asking for, you know, job descriptions, plans, all of these pieces. I would love to see that, but I feel like we need to do this yesterday to free her up. So, I'm in support of this. I just wanted to say to you that, you know, please do bring what my colleagues are asking for if this passes, but please, like, we're in a pandemic. We need help with these health protocols. We need someone to really own it, who isn't doing another full-time job. I get it, I do. I want all the documentation too, because I think it's very important for board and our oversight to have it, but Dr. Boyd has got to work on special education. She has got to, and we've got to find somebody to fill this role, because we have, you heard the young man speak today about his concerns about the protocols in his school. We've got to get somebody who can focus on this 100% to make sure we have fidelity of implementation of our health protocols, and do the work our system needs to coordinate with our county to make sure that we are keeping our kids safe in school to the best of our ability. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, second round?
Sorry, we've come full circle here. I do have an amendment that I'd like to put forward, but I also do want to say this, because I don't think I had the chance to say this before. The reason why I felt this was important to bring this here is because if we're going to use Esser funds for it, Esser funds really fall to us for us to approve. If it was going to come out of operations, that is your work and your bailiwick. Having said that, and I'm not going to go on and on, I agree with much has been said, but at this point, we know this is overdue. We know what is happening. I think all of us felt it when Dr. Boyd had to leave the meeting to go attend to this work, when it was a special education audit. Her bailiwick, she left that to go do COVID. We have to relieve her of that responsibility in the same manner that we've relieved the principals, at least we're trying to relieve the principals with those Esser funds that have been allocated to them. This is not going to be a position that competes with the Public Health Director. It is not. It's going to be coordinating and managing what she's doing right now. She's Dr. Boyd, not Dr. Boyd, a medical doctor. So, I want to return her to the business of her job. I would like to offer the amendment to just say that this will be from Esser funds, and Mr. Smith, if we have opportunity, to amend the Esser fund application, I'd like us to be able to take advantage of that. So, that way, we know this is a COVID-related need. So, it should be used by the funds that are provided to us to do that. So, that is my amendment.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Maron. Dr. Anderson, I think you spoke to it. Ms. Maron?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I now call on Mr. Frisch.
Okay. I move to direct the superintendent to establish a staff position in the Department of Special Services to support the assistant superintendent in managing public health-related work in the school division utilizing Esser funds. I think that's the main difference.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, the question has been called, and I'll just take a moment to ask our parliamentarian, do we vote on whether we vote, right?
Yes, you need two thirds.
On actually calling the question, yes. Mr. Frisch, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Frisch has called the question. Everybody in favor of voting on the amendment?
I'm so sorry. Can you repeat that? I can't.
Mr. Frisch has called the question. Everybody in favor? On voting, on calling? Okay. On voting, on calling, okay. One second, y'all. One, one person. Mr. Frisch has asked us to call the question to the amendment. Everyone in favor of calling the question and voting on the amendment to the main motion, please raise your hand. Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Seizmoreheiser, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Marin, Dr. Anderson, and myself, and Mr. Frisch. I said, Mr. Frisch. And Ms. Tolan, thank you. Everybody opposed? But, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Omech, on the calling of the question. Anybody abstaining? For the, yeah, last part. Yes, this passes, so we are going to call the question to this amendment. Yes, so, the amendment to the main motion is on the screen, underlined in green. So, we are. Yes, Dr. Anderson.
I'm voting.
Okay, okay. All those in favor of the amendment to use ESER funds to fund this position, please raise your hands. Dr. Yes, correct. Dr. Anderson, Ms. Marin, Ms., Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Seizmoreheiser, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Kezgamarra, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and myself, and Ms. Tolan. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Ms. Omech. Okay, so we will go back to the main motion. I still had some go-backs, so I will go to Ms. McLaughlin.
So, the reason why I wanted to go back is, number one, I really appreciate, Dr. Brabran, you're saying that there's, you can't say that this is one, it's like a one-year position, because we thought COVID pre-Delta was kind of gonna be in the rearview mirror. That's the first thing. The second thing, my colleagues, as you know, we now have 80-plus new school nurses. That is Herculean in numbers compared to what we've ever had. So, we're going to need a best-in-class, public health-trained person to be working with Dr. Boyd. Yes, she has Ms. Trauton, and yes, she has Ms. Skirpski, but this is a game changer, what's gonna happen with our school clinics. And so, I think we don't want to tie the superintendent's hands. I also really want to, again, encourage you, Dr. Brabran, that if we're looking at having Dr. Boyd focus on special ed, she's gonna need a senior-level person on her team to be doing public health. And I don't know the roles of Ms. Skirpski and Ms. Trauton enough, but our counterpart across the river is gonna have a public health officer. I want to remind everybody also, 25% of Fairfax County children have a known health condition. We've been woefully behind in having best-in-class clinics staffed by school nurses. Now, we're gonna have them. Dr. Gloria and her team are trying to run a public health department for a county of a million people. So, we talk about understaffed in dealing with the whole child, the health needs of our children, a growing population of poverty that is now at 30%. I can't emphasize enough that, Dr. Brabran, I hope you, A, please affirm in the microphone for me, because I didn't want to make this amendment, you will bring us at the October 19th, return to school, just a draft job description or whatever your, where a status update on this proposal?
A draft job, job description. I will do it for the 19th.
Great, and so, what my hope would be, my colleagues, is it'll be incorporated in that work session. We can then, if we have any concerns, did he shoot high enough? Do we want to see this, you know, what happens with the position? I appreciate what Mr. Frisch and others have said. It's broad enough now. Let's, let them do their best thinking, but I really do like the idea that on the 19th, we can make sure it's what we all hope to see happen. So, again, I look forward to seeing everybody supporting this.
Ms. Kezgamarra?
Yeah, I have to clarify, because, Dr. Brabran, I did ask for this information when we had the work session and Ms. Marin brought it up, because the reason I asked was because I don't think we can assume we need just one person. You may need a team, right? And so, I'm a little, I feel a little kind, I feel like this is not the level, I don't want to be critical. This makes me uncomfortable, because I'd rather vote on what I know the community would know what we're doing, right? And that's the reason I asked the question two weeks ago when we had the work session. Since then, I haven't gotten any additional information. And as a board member, as me, maybe not anybody else, that makes me uncomfortable, because I feel like when the community comes to me and says, what did you do? Some may like it, because it feels like, okay, they're moving in the right direction, and, and they're going to have this, this guidance, and, and maybe it's what is missing, but I was hoping for that thoughtfulness that would say, with input from Dr. Boyd, to say what she really needs. That's the reason I'm questioning this. Not because I don't support the idea, but because I think that's at least how I want to govern. And that's what has made me uncomfortable with this.
I think in, if I could, just in all candor, a board member brought the motion. No, we're not ready. I don't have it all dotted and eyed yet, because we've been too busy in the last two weeks. I haven't even had time with Dr. Boyd to, to work on the full thing of the plan. We have been working on drafting the job description. I can only share with you, a, a board member brought a motion. I support this motion, because it was something I was already working on. I don't get to decide the timelines that motions come to the board. We need this position. I can tell you that with 100% truth. I will bring the job description on the 19th. As far as the plan, to be honest, again, all candor, the full plan, it may require, as Ms. McLaughlin said, to hire that person to fully understand what we need or not need, with 82 new nurses coming on, with the scope of the pandemic. Dr. Boyd didn't get hired to do a pandemic. She got hired to do special education, and the pandemic has taken over.
Dr. Brabran, I agree with that.
And I, I know you're not saying that. I mean, I know you think the world of her, and I do, too, but I'm just saying.
No, that's, that's not.
I haven't had time to do the work. A board member brought the motion, and so here we are. That's why I don't have it done, and I don't get to dictate when board members bring motions. That's the bottom line. I need the position, though. That's the truth.
I appreciate that, Dr. Brabran. Here's why I posed the question the way I did, because Dr. Boyd does know what has been on her plate and what has been burdening her, and that should inform how we move forward, irrespective of who else is coming in.
And I'll certainly be sure that's reflected in the position that we develop and how it's created. I just haven't had time to, I haven't had time to work with her and meet with her more than five minutes to go over this position.
Thank you, Dr.
Because we've been so busy trying to just get ready for the vaccination, the testing. We're all working 16, 17 hours a day, and I'm doing my best to work with this board in the pandemic. I ask for you to support it. If you don't, I'll have to figure out what we'll do. But again, I've already committed on the 19th to bring more. I won't have a full plan, though. I would have a job description. That's what I would have.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran, I would ask you to consider this. It may not be just a position. It may need to be a team, and that's the reason I posed the question a few weeks ago.
And that's, honestly, you and I honestly are on the same page, but I won't have a full plan done in two weeks' time.
I got you.
I can have the job description and then have that build toward the plan and work with Dr. Boyd to try to have a bigger plan of how that will really inter, interface. And I understand, too, this board's working hard. We're all working hard. And again, thank you for, thank you for the points you've raised.
I would also ask, Dr. Brabran, that we put those parameters in there so that there is no confusion, because I have heard from other folks who are in the other health realm, right, and they are watching where we write these lines, and that is the reason that I'm saying this is so important. So, I'm not trying to be difficult. I do appreciate Ms. Marin's efforts and Dr. Anderson's efforts, but sometimes, even in our best intentions, we step in stuff and we have to go back and fix it, and I'd like to try to avoid that.
Absolutely. One thing, just to recommit, I will not publish that position until I review it October 19th with this board.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Brabran, for your frank words. This is the, the challenge that I think we're at. We heard two weeks ago that you were planning on doing this, and that this was gonna happen. And the reason it was gonna happen is because you are in charge of operations of this school system, and you recognize that we have an incredibly talented Dr. Boyd, who is over, just has so much on her plate, and that she needs staff and support to do it. In the same way that in the past, you have added coordinator positions and managers without the approval of this board, I understand that this is, in many ways, a signal to the community that we all support a focus in this area. And if that's what we're doing, that's great, but I don't think that we are actually utilizing or respecting the role of you as the head of operations being able to identify how to best put together the team that you need. I mean, you do, when you hire an assistant superintendent or a senior-level person, that does typically come to the board, but as a, as described up here, that really doesn't do that. And so, because, and I respect that you, you're feeling that because it's already come to the board, that if we were to vote this down, that there would be a reluctance on your part to proceed. And what I think we need to understand is that we want you to have the flexibility to utilize the budgetary, your own budget, as needed, to flesh out additional staff in different parts of the school system. And in this case, yes, we do know that Dr. Boyd needs additional staff. I personally don't think it's my job as a school board member to get down into the level of detail as to the job description. If you come to me and you say, Dr. Anne, you know, Dr. Boyd has a position that she's filling that will offload some of the work she's doing, then you should be able to hire that person. But now, because of where we're at tonight, it sounds like you would like an affirmation, because it puts you in a difficult position since it's been up here. Is that correct?
I'd say where we are now, I would like affirmation from the board that, ah, Dr. Boyd needs help. The final detail of what that position looks like, Dr. Boyd will have a hand in creating, and I would show it to you on the 19th.
So, can I suggest, then, Dr. Brabran, that rather than us directing you to do something that you've already said you were planning on doing, that this board shows affirmation for the work you're doing?
Honestly, that's not for me to decide. I defer to the board. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Omech, and then I think we'll be ready to vote.
Yeah, I think, I mean, what we're hearing here is, obviously, this has been mentioned in various meetings. There's clearly a need enough that Dr. Brabran has brought it up. Is it something he's considered for the division? You know, Ms. Marin took initiative to bring this forward for us to, to put into action. I think it's good news. I think we're all in agreement to move forward on this thing, and it seems like that's the direction we can head in. I had a question. I'm sorry. Just about the funding piece specifically. The part I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around, but I do plan to support this either way, is, given the 80-some, you know, number of nurses that we're having, funded by the county, and given our intention potentially for this to continue, given the oversight role that person might have, et cetera, you know, I'm thinking, just in a short amount of time, we're gonna end up wanting this to be reabsorbed into the regular budget. You know, we're trying to use ESER, which could be, used differently, is temporary. I guess I'm just, I want to walk through a little bit of the rationale as to why we're choosing to specify it in that way, having been the only person who didn't support that amendment. Yeah, especially given that it seems like a county role. I worry about our division becoming responsible for that health side. You know, this is kind of, I don't know if it's department creep or role creep here, but.
Just one clarification. Because you've added ESER funds, ESER funds end at the latest in 2024. The latest any ESER funds will exist.
Right.
Are through September. So, it's a temporary position when it's used through ESER funds. It may extend into next year, which is '22, '23, and it could be built on the budget at a later time. But because it's ESER funds, this would be only as good as the ESER funds are allowed to be authorized, which I believe is through September 2024 at this time.
Yeah, yeah, and that's exactly my concern, is why are we specifying it to be ESER when potentially it may be reabsorbed, potentially it may have oversight over county-paid positions?
Ms. Omech, that's the motion on the table, so if you could just speak to it directly.
I was just asking for clarification as to the rationale for that, given those.
We just discussed. There was a motion. There was an amendment.
No, I understand that it's what it is. I'm asking for the rationale.
They, he didn't make the motion, so the makers of the motion spoke to that when we had the amendment.
All right, that's fine. I mean, that's fine. I called a question.
Okay, the question has been called. All those in favor of taking this vote on this motion, please raise your hands. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Okay, I don't like that. Okay, so we have.
Okay, withdraw my motion. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Darnak Kofax, and then we'll be ready to, please take this vote.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, Dr. Brabran, thank you for answering our questions. Thank you for showing us that the need was there, and thank you for agreeing to bring us a plan on the 19th. I appreciate that. I think this process was a little rocky. I can speak to my colleagues offline, how I think it might have been done better, but I will support what's out here now, because it's needed, and our superintendent, and all of us who have been out there talking to Dr. Boyd and everyone who has to work with her team in these, these very trying times, know she needs the help. So, thank you, Dr. Brabran, for easing my concerns.
Thank you. I, the motion is before us on the screen. It's been seconded, and I'm now calling for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those opposed? Ms. Tolan voted in favor of it. No oppositions, no abstentions. That motion passes. Thank you. And I'll just briefly speak to it, now that that motion has passed. I will say, I did vote for it, because, Dr. Brabran, you know, it was brought. You asked us to give you that affirmation, but I, I think it's wholly inappropriate that this board would get into the weeds of somebody at this level within the organization to direct you, to go hire them. I believe there is definitely a need. You shared with us that you were looking to fill it, and I, I feel like this is overreach on the part of this board, but I voted in favor, because at this point, you asked us to ensure that we could give you that affirmation. So, thank you.
May I be recognized, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Marin.
Well, since we're continuing to talk about it after it was passed, I just.
Ms. Marin, I'd just like to say, we took the vote. I had not had an opportunity to have my comments, and per parliamentary procedure, I do get the opportunity to make comments, even after the vote.
And as the maker of the motion, I actually, I did signal that I did want to have the last word, which is usually a courtesy extended to the maker of the motion.
You had spoken to it, Ms. Marin, twice, I believe.
Yes, and usually at times, it's nice, the courtesy is, look, may I please speak, Madam Chair?
Be recognized, Ms. Marin, quickly, please.
I think it's, it's a shame that we're taking this motion that is something that we dire, dearly need and tainting it with such negativity about the process. The truth is, I announced this twice in public in a work session over two weeks ago. I brought it as new business two days after that. I followed up with people by phone, email, and text. I did everything I could to try and get input. I thank Dr. Anderson and Ms. McLaughlin for working with me to make this something that would be more palatable. I am not thrilled that we are asking the superintendent, who has in absolute certain terms, say he needs help. Who are we to say that we should not grant? Who are we to say that we should not grant him the help to help our children? My own child got put on pause today for 14 days now. I would love to have someone who could help advocate to lessen the COVID quarantine, like Lauter has done, for 10 days. I would love for someone to find out why his classmate who was paused, excuse me, on Thursday, still has not been contacted by the Health Department. We need someone to liaise, and that is the motion. And I think we should be very proud that we are doing this for the health of our kids and our special education program, and I'd appreciate not editorializing the hard work that has gone into making this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. And again, I do thank Dr. Brabran for realizing that this was a need in our organization and giving Dr. Boyd the necessary, being willing to give that relief. All right, I will hand it over to the vice chair to go over the next two items on our agenda.
Agenda item five, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed here have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item number six, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. The new business agenda, new business items are on the screen. I will turn it back over to the chair.
Agenda item 7.01, Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Brabran.
Thank you, Chairman Pekarski, and members of the board. I just want to give you a couple of nuggets, and then I'll be done. This week, I had the honor of presenting a surprise award to Howard Brewer, who works at our inter-agency alternative school located at Bryant High School. He was announced as the Region Four Virginia Teacher of the Year. Mr. Brewer is also a U.S. Navy veteran and a career switcher, and one of the reasons he got into education after serving in the military was to serve young people in his community. I'm so excited about this. Principal Jennifer Knox touted Mr. Brewer's works by saying his impact transcends his students' and families. He makes his colleagues better teachers. Every single adult who works alongside Mr. Brewer emphatically agrees on one thing: He makes me better. He clearly makes his kids better. And he is one of eight teachers now from the Commonwealth's Eight Regions who will go to be part of the selection for the 2022 Virginia Teacher of the Year. And he will be honored at a reception in the governor's executive mansion next week. We're very, very excited for him for Fairfax County Public Schools, for Region Four, and for Bryant. I think he's maybe the first TSRC specialist to ever be honored in this way, and really a great way to lift up the work of him and his colleagues. I also want to just take a moment to acknowledge Dr. John Allwood, his passing. He was a Fairfax County principal at Edison High School. He also founded Lake Braddock Secondary School when it opened in 1971. He was the first principal there for many years. The drive into Lake Braddock bears his name. The essence of his leadership can be appreciated and summarized by this quote from him: "Teaching is the only important thing. Everything else is pretty incidental." Our thoughts and prayers go out to him. And I want to just tell you a private thing. Many of you know I did work at Lake Braddock. I certainly wasn't there when he was principal. He was there, I think, from '71 to in the early '80s, 10 to 15 years there. There was a racial issue between Lake Braddock and TC Williams, and he heard about it. And we've had some of that happen even in our system in the last year or two. Teachers came down and said this had happened. Coaches went down and said it happened. He called, he called a student assembly, Lake Braddock, 4,000 kids, and told the faculty to stay in their classrooms. He personally would talk to all of those kids. He told them he was disappointed that he expected better from Lake Braddock students, and that the following game at TC Williams, he expected the highest levels of behavior and performance. And there were no further issues at that game or throughout the season. He was that kind of leader. He didn't need teachers in the room. He commanded that school, and God rest his soul. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. Agenda item 8.01, Board Committee Reports, and I call on Mr. Darnakofax for an update from the Audit Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had our first Audit Committee meeting on September 29th, and the Auditor General first provided an overview of the Office of the Auditor General's teams, its roles and responsibilities. The presentation included a refresher of the FY22 Audit Plan as well as other office initiatives and accomplishments. The Audit Committee also welcomed a new citizen member, John Shames, who is beginning his two-year term. The Auditor General then presented on the Audit General Performance Expectations, which outlined the office leader's expectations and job responsibilities. Next, the Auditor General and her team presented the results of the inquiry related to a leadership development procurement as well as the results of the FY21 Quarter III and Quarter IV Continuous Monitoring. And lastly, the status of prior audit recommendations were discussed in the follow-up report. The next Audit Committee meeting is scheduled for October 27th at 4:00 p.m., and we hope to see some of you there.
Thank you. Agenda item 9.01, Board Matters. I will call on Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I too enjoyed the celebration of Mr. Brewer at Bryant School. It was absolutely amazing. And we actually have, here in Fairfax County Public Schools, not only Mr. Brewer as the Teacher of the Year for Region Four, but we have the School Psychologist for Fort Belvoir Upper, Fort Belvoir Upper School as the Psychologist of the Year for the whole state. It's incredible, and we are just so proud of the incredible work that all of our staff do to go above and beyond the call of duty in very difficult times. So I am forever appreciative of it, and I've had the benefit of being able to visit a number of our schools and walk and observe classrooms with principals over the past two weeks. And every place I go, I see our children just embracing the joy of learning, enjoying being together. And the one thing that I do continue to urge is that get our kids outside during the day, please. Thank you.
Ms. Homash?
Thank you. October is Bullying Prevention Month. On average, more than half of our youth behave in ways to change themselves due to bullying. Meanwhile, self-esteem is reported to be one of the most essential components in a child's ability to reach their full potential. As we all know, but too often forget, children learn behavior, bad behavior, from their environments and the adults in their lives. So whether we agree or disagree, as we know, everyone deserves to be heard, to be seen, to be valued, and to be embraced charitably in our schools and in our communities. Charitably means we hear them out before we judge. It means we pause when we are uncomfortable to ask ourselves questions and to learn a little bit more about what we might not be used to. It means not ridiculing, giggling, yelling at others for their differences. Let's be curious, not cowardly. Imagine how cool it is to challenge the ways we think by delving deeply into what someone else's story might be, or tapping into someone's soul and empathizing with their feelings and learning more about human experiences that are different than our own. Or to coming to the conclusion that the same pain and struggle that one might feel when they're hurt or disrespected may be experienced by you and by others, in the same way, of course, that deep love and friendship and happiness are too. Because those are the bonds that allow us to relate to one another in ways that are far deeper and more powerful than the reasons we see dividing us apart. So, in National Bullying Prevention Month, I hope that we can take steps to be bystanders when we face bullying, for that kid who's not picked on the PE team, for that kid who might not find a friend. As our student representative said so articulately earlier, to sit next to that person in lunch, to be mindful of one another's mental health, and to take that extra step this month especially, but always, to be an ally and a bystander in preventing bullying in our schools.
Ms. Kizgimara?
Thank you. I want to just mention a few things I had an opportunity to participate in these past few weeks. I was able to, along with some of my other colleagues, to attend the FCPS Equity Symposium, as well as the 24th Virginia Showcase of Bands at Herndon High School. That was a lot of fun. And I wanted to thank my colleagues, Ms. Pekarski and Ms. Corbett Sanders, for allowing me to participate in town halls with them and having an opportunity to interface with the community. I do want to make a few comments about Bullying Prevention Month, which is recognized in October. In my work, in working with children and representing children in various situations, I would say that bullying and what children experience when they are not properly supported is probably one of the most harmful things that I have been able to see in the course of my life. It produces trauma. It produces long-lasting harm that takes a lot of therapeutic work to try to address. I think sometimes we can have a physical wound, but an emotional wound is, I don't know, is perhaps one of the most difficult things to deal with. And so I just want to encourage us to follow the wisdom of our student representative, as Ms. Homash mentioned, and in the words of wisdom I found on Twitter. I want to share this with you. Be the reason someone feels welcomed, seen, heard, loved, and supported. I think we can all work toward that. I wish some of those folks that were here earlier could hear that because I do think, as a community, we could work a little bit on communicating more and bullying a little less. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frisch?
Thanks. First, I want to thank my colleagues for their comments this evening and their kind words over the last few weeks. And I also want to mention something I went to this past weekend. I had the honor of attending the unveiling of a historical marker at James Lee Community Center in Falls Church, right here in Providence District, at the invitation of Supervisor Dahlia Palczek, our former school board member. The marker commemorates the James Lee Elementary School, which opened at the site of the community center in 1948. James Lee Elementary School was built on land purchased in 1866 by James Edward Lee, an African-American who was born free. In 1945, Lee's son sold a portion of the original property to the Fairfax County School Board to build a school, a modern school for Black children. At the time, these students were attending school in what amounted to a Fairfax County Public School, by the way, that amounted to a shack with a wood-burning stove in the middle of the room. And as we heard from students who were the first to get into the new school and the last to be educated there, they remembered very well how, you know, some days would be way too hot, some days would be way too cold, the draft, et cetera, and what it was like to be in the new building, where they got to smell new books. And this student, who was the first to go through it, talked about how, even to this day, when she goes to a bookstore and smells the smell of books, it transports her back to that day when she got to be in a brand-new school with brand-new things, and how lucky she thought she was. And now, the location of that school is where we have the James Lee Community Center. And the event was just fantastic. And it was also a great reminder that Fairfax County Public Schools is partnering with the Board of Supervisors to host the inaugural Fairfax County Historical Markers Contest that will showcase previously untold narratives and highlight the histories of those who are underrepresented in school curriculum. And this year's focus will be on African-American history in Fairfax County. The Fairfax County Historical Marker Program was established in 1998 by the Fairfax County Historical, History Commission, and has since produced 53 markers across the county. Out of those, 10 showcase African-American history. It is planned that the inaugural contest will be the first of many opportunities to add historical markers throughout the county. It will also serve as a learning opportunity for students as they will be encouraged to engage with the local community and learn about our county's rich history. County and school division staff are already hard at work at this, and I can't wait until we're able to share more information with our community as students begin taking part in this great contest. Thank you.
Ms. Cohen?
I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our friends in Prince William County, who hosted us at Colgan High School, thanks to Chairman Latif and school board member Lisa Zagarpur. Colgan High School was amazing. And they hosted Hayfield, Lake Braddock, John Lewis High School, Edison, Mount Vernon, and Justice. And I can say, with no bias whatsoever, that the FCPS bands kicked butt. I am just perpetually grateful, I will say, all year long, and sometimes I mention it and sometimes I forget to, but the number of Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts who reach out to get help with their badges. And it is one of the coolest parts of this gig, I will say, to get to hear from our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and the questions that they have and the ideas that they have. They just blow me away every time. So this last week, thank you so much to Mason for your thoughts and ideas on overcrowding and your really thoughtful questions. Looking forward to heading out to Liberty Middle School next week for a planting event. Super looking forward to our FCPS Excellence Awards, where we finally get a chance to shed some light on all of the amazing FCPS staff and everything they do for all of our kids. And the last thing I just wanted to say is, many, most of us share our schools with other people, but sometimes we have a few that we get to keep all to ourselves. So Sangster Elementary is one of those that, I think I have 99.5%, so I'm going to claim it as my own. And they were named, Dr. Brabran referenced it last time, but I wanted to give a special shout-out because they were named a Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. Only seven schools in the entire Commonwealth. Go Falcons, Ms. Jankovic, our new principal, and Ms. Lisa Riddell, our most recent past principal. You guys are just unbelievable. The whole staff at Sangster, from APs down to our custodians, everybody, you guys just really make us incredibly proud. So, thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I want to just add on something to what Dr. Brabran had said about Dr. John Allwood, who had passed away. Something that his family shared that I really want to read because I think it's really special and reflects his legacy here in Fairfax County. "Most poignant was the way his Christian faith sustained him in what became a national hostage crisis story in 1982. Reason and compassion are what he used when an 18-year-old, rejected by his girlfriend, took 10 people hostage in the school with a deer-hunting rifle and held them all night. The boy threatened to turn the violence on himself. John said, 'I told him he'd made a bad mistake, but he could overcome it and make a life for himself.' John was the last hostage to leave. And instead of being worried about himself or those waiting for him, he was worried about the boy,' recalls his wife, Betsy. The boy ultimately threw out the rifle, and he came out alive." I read that, and I want to thank Principal Daniel Smith of Lake Braddock for sending that to me, and my wonderful colleague Laura Jane Cohen to let us know about the passing of this very special man who opened Lake Braddock at the time the largest secondary school, high school in all of the Commonwealth of Virginia back in 1973. He gave his life to education, and he leaves behind an amazing legacy. I'm grateful for all that he gave to Fairfax County schools. My love and prayers go out to his family and all who knew and loved him. He's certainly a shining star that we can be very proud of.
Thank you. If we could recognize Ms. Tolan?
Thank you. I am going to talk a little bit about our earlier motion, since I didn't get to speak earlier. earlier, but especially particularly since we've heard from parents and students tonight, and, you know, our need to clarify and improve our COVID-19 procedures. And I know from talking with principals that they're overwhelmed in asking for centralized, clear procedures. And we have procedures that need to be updated regularly as we get new information and new data, and we gain, you know, insights into what's happening with COVID-19. We definitely need someone to work on this, and Dr. Boyd needs help, I know that. So I'm happy that we'll be able to do that and look forward to working with Dr. Braebrun to get this done as quickly as we possibly can. I am happy to start working on our new committees. We had our first budget work session this week, and I was able to participate in the meeting of the Successful Child and Youth Policy Team. The Facilities Planning Advisory Committee has gotten going, and also participating in the Audit Committee that we heard about earlier this evening. This week, I understand, is Custodian Appreciation Week. And I just wanted to, you know, make a shout-out to our custodians, who are indispensable members of our team, particularly during this time, as they're working so hard to keep our schools clean and keeping everyone safe. Thank you so much for your hard work. October is also Principal Appreciation Month, another set of heroes in keeping our teacher staff and students safe in our schools. Thank you so much for everything that you do. I'm going to be starting to visit and shadow different people working in the district across Dreamsville. I'm starting out with some McLean High School counselors in the next week or two. And wanted to give just a happy homecoming shout-out to McLean, Lingey, and Herndon. McLean's homecoming was last week, and Herndon's coming up next week. I wanted to just, you may have seen the article about one of our Dreamsville students, Ethan Zhang, age nine, and a fourth grader at Churchill Road Elementary, is a finalist in the Time Magazine for Kids Student Journalist Competition. He chose to profile Maria Perone, our Director of Food Services, part of the competition's final round, with direct students to find a local hero to interview and to profile. Throughout the COVID pandemic, Ms. Perone has helped a lot of families in need by providing more than 10 million meals to kids in our county, Ethan said. So I thought her work and her leadership was very news movie and deserved to be written about by someone. Ethan is one of 20 student journalist finalists across the United States. And when he interviewed Ms. Perone, and he wound up being selected by Time for Kids as one of 10 winners in the country, whose work will be published on the magazine's website. The story about Ms. Perone is now available online on the Time for Kids site. Way to go, Ethan. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. We apologize for the earlier tech issues. Ms. Maron?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have just finished making the appointments to the committees that hold seats for our citizens and, excuse me, our constituents. And so I've got them all filled now for Minority Student Achievement, Advanced Academic Programs, Student Health, and the Challenged Materials or the Materials Reviews Committees. And I'm really pleased with the representation of people from different areas of Hunter Mill, which are Ruston, Vienna, and some of Herndon. And, you know, these folks represent, you know, they include F C P S parents, children spanning K-12, professionals with professional degrees, and curriculum and instruction experience, and just thoughtful people who want to contribute to the discussion and the work happening. So, I only wish I could include more people who had applied, but I hope to stay in touch with them as well. I'm really glad that I got to meet with Laura Jane Cohen and our government relations staff about, staff member, about getting ready to advocate in Richmond in January for the General Assembly and to elevate the laws and state supports that will help us here in F C P S to keep doing what's best for kids, especially around that literacy instruction piece. And I'm eager to hear the board discussion and input on October 25th, both at our meeting and the public hearing on the legislative agenda. And I'm also working with Supervisor Walter Alcorn of the Hunter Mill District to host a Hunter Mill Huddle with state-elected leaders soon after the election, to really express the school divisions and the Hunter Mill areas, you know, needs. And to that point, the election is days away, and the school bond is on the ballot, so I continue to advocate. At the point where I keep materials in my purse and everywhere I go, whether it's at the grocery store or the library, I'm asking people if they're registered to vote, and if so, I hand them some materials, so. This weekend is the F C P S Teacher-Artist Exhibition over at the Workhouse Art Center in Lorton, and I'm hoping to get there, especially to see constituent and Hunter Mill teacher, artist teacher extraordinaire Bethany Molino. Looking forward to the first CPDC meeting next week. That's our Comprehensive Plan Committee, of which we heard the, and saw the report posted this evening. And then also, in a little bit of time, on October 23rd, we're going to do what Ms. Rochamore Seizmoreheiser helped promote, I think it was earlier this year, maybe last year, which was to give the opportunity for people with disabilities or anyone who might need some practice, and what to do if you are pulled over by the police at a traffic stop. That was such a great idea that she initiated, that now I believe it's in many locations. So it will be in Hunter Mill at Dogwood Elementary on October 23rd, and I think that is such a worthwhile thing. So thank you for that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maron. Dr. Anderson, follow Ms. Seizmoreheiser.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to the Annandale Adams, who performed this evening. They were just super awesome, and in their honor, I had to don my Annandale red. I've got my Annandale pen. I got all outfitted. I was just so proud to see that wonderful, wonderful performance. Speaking of Annandale, we have had so many of the Afghan students come into our schools over the last several weeks. Forty-six out of the 80 are in Annandale schools and Mason District schools, and we have Park Lawn that had 25 students. That is an entire class. I'm just so proud of the welcoming environment, kind of the theme for tonight that we were discussing, that the students and the staff at all of these schools, and I believe I have one, two, three, four, five, six, eight schools that have welcomed Afghan students. And there's just been such concerted effort to ensure that those students are welcomed and not be left on their own to navigate the school or the community, but really embraced. And so I'm very proud of that effort, so I wanted to talk about that. But I would be remiss if I didn't say, Dr. Braebrun, with these additional students comes new additional responsibilities, particularly at Park Lawn with 25 new students, which is an entire class. I'm really hoping that they're being provided with the resources in order to do this great work that they are engaging in.
Absolutely. We've been carefully monitoring that and working through the registration process and then supports, and we continue to provide the board weekly updates about the numbers. But I think we're even up now to 90 families that are in our schools. We welcome them and want to support them, as we know they've been through just a traumatic set of experiences to arrive at our footsteps, and we want to welcome them into our Fairfax County Schools family.
Thank you. I also want to remind our students that F C P S will again be offering the S A T School during the School Day on the 13th to students in grades 12. While registration closed on September 8th, I did want to lend my support for this approach. Having it on a School Day and also absorbing the cost of the assessment has been a game-changer for many of our families in the Mason District, because that tended to be cost-prohibitive for many of our families. So, thank you. I also want to highlight an initiative that our Fairfax County Board of Supervisors are sponsoring this weekend, which is the Stuff the Bus. It is this Saturday, October 9th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And in Mason District, that Stuff the Bus will be taking place at the George Mason Library in Belvedere Elementary. And it will be benefiting AKA, the Annandale Christian Community for Action, which is an institution that provides early childhood education, food, rental assistance, furniture, and other services to needy families in the Annandale and Bellis Crossroads area. So please just bring some materials and stuff that bus at the library and at Belvedere Elementary School. Again, very quickly, as mentioned by my colleagues, October is Bullying Prevention Month. Each year, over 2 million students report being bullied. It's estimated that over 20% of youth in the United States are involved in bullying each year as a victim or as an aggressor. Bullying can occur online, in our communities, in our schools, in the school board meetings. It's imperative that adults and children really be more mindful and stand together to address this issue and to create a climate where bullying is not tolerated, because we need to ensure a culture of respect and safety in our schools. Had the opportunity just this past couple of weeks to visit Glasgow Middle School and West Lawn Elementary. I want to say thank you so much to Principals Powell and Hill to show off their staff, and I know that they're working really, really hard to make sure that not only they're putting together mitigating factors, but also to focus on the academics of our students as well. So, thank you. The Bell Game for Falls Church High School and Justice High School will be happening on October 15th. 61 years of this tradition, where the Bell Game promotes a friendly rivalry and good sportsmanship between those two high schools, and they are provided, they are presented, the winning team is presented with the bell from the USS Jeb Stuart Ship, which is presented at the end of the football game. So I'm really looking forward to attending that. Justice has won 35 games, and Falls Church has won 25 games over this history. So, game on. Lastly, well, next to lastly, I want to remind the Justice Pyramid Community about the virtual community meeting that will be taking place next week to talk about the High School Edition Project, including the revised proposal for parking solutions. Please be sure to visit my newsletter, which has a link for you to sign up, or on the website at F C P S. Lastly, October is National Principal Month, and I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the efforts of all of our school leaders and their devotion to student success and staff development, especially during this very, very difficult time. So, principals everywhere, but particularly in the Mason District, happy National Principals Month. Thank you. Thank you. First, I want to say, Dr. Anderson, I love your pen, but I really love the shirts that the Annandale Chorus was wearing, so I'm just going to put out the universe that I need to go buy myself one of those shirts. Those are awesome. I wanted to say, and I loved having the chorus sing, they were amazing. Congratulations. When you know with a link to buy the shirt, let me know, and I'll go buy one. Congratulations to Howard Brewer for Alternative Schools Teacher, for Region Four Teacher of the Year. I love hearing one of our Alternative Schools Teacher being named Teacher of the Year, because the work they do is so groundbreaking and important for our students. And also to Teri Hodges, who's named Virginia School Psychologist of the Year for 2021, 2022. She worked at Fort Belvoir Upper Elementary School for the past 11 years, serving our military-connected students and acting as a leader in the community. So congratulations and thank you, Ms. Hodges. I was honored to be able to give some opening remarks at the Equity Symposium on September 25th. The theme of my remarks really were, what if today we let go of the old and create a more inclusive normal, where we affirm the humanity of all, where all of our students are seen for their strengths first and for what they bring to us? So I think today was a really great day to reaffirm that statement from the Equity Symposium. I will say, as a former marching band parent and as a parent of a child who's performed with every single performing arts department at his high school, I was really, really honored to be able to hang out with my colleague, Karen Kies-Gamara, and hang out, hand out awards at the Herndon High School Showcase of Bands on September 25th. I've been to many of these competitions as a parent, and it was so fun to go back and see the bands and their enthusiasm, and just to hear the amazing music and see their shows. I've also enjoyed attending some of our homecoming festivities and seeing the pictures of homecoming, and the kids excited to be at the football games and at the dances and connecting with each other. And I'm really excited, thank you South Lakes, for being part of their homecoming parade next Friday. And I did want to mention, that many of my colleagues have mentioned Bullying Prevention Month, but October is also Disability Employment Acceptance Month, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that. I had a great visit to the Davis Center. Thank you, Principal Clayton, for welcoming me, and I saw some of the classes at the Davis Center, and the great work that our staff are doing with our post-graduate students in helping them transition the job skills and independent skills that our students are learning there. And I appreciate my many conversations with Dr. Presidio and Dr. Boyd about the need to continually improve our transition services for our students with disabilities, so that we have better employment outcomes and post-secondary outcomes for all of our students with disabilities. Now, I'll just put out that our wonderful programs at Davis, Pulley, and Steph, we probably have between, I think, 300 to 400 students that utilize those, but we have 27,000 students with I E Ps. And the J-Larke Study itself mentioned the need for really good transition services. So, I appreciate the work that Davis Center is doing. I'm really excited to go back and look at some of their, go with them to some of their job sites and see the great work that's happening at the job sites as well. And as we celebrate Disability Employment Awareness Month, I just wanted to share a couple statistics with you all. The unemployment rate for persons with disability is 12.6% in 2020, increased by 5.3% from the previous year, and is much higher than the rate for those without a disability. Among workers with a disability, 29% worked part-time in 2020, compared with 16% to those without. In 2020, persons with a disability were more likely to work in service industries or in production, transportation material, but much less likely to work in management, professional, or related occupations. I'm very excited to have a neurodiversity specialist hopefully joining us on board at some point soon to expand our normative culture to include those with living norms of disabilities. And last, I promise, I'm really, really excited about the traffic stop events that Ms. Maron mentioned. They're actually taking place all around the county, and these are events that I worked with our Board of Supervisors on piloting, which is a chance for both our law enforcement officers and our persons with disabilities to practice safe, controlled traffic stops, so both our persons with disabilities and our law enforcement officers learn to work with each other and practice safe interactions. And I'm really, really excited that these are now being expanded to not just traffic stops, but walking stops for persons with disabilities who may not drive but still want to practice safe police interactions. And I will say, from the pilots that took place in talking to the law enforcement officers, they felt they learned just as much as our students with disabilities did. So I'm really excited that, I think there's eight of them happening on October 23rd. Reach out to the Ark of Northern Virginia for more information. Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you. All right. I will give you all a big gift, and I will make one comment and bid you all a good night. I was really honored with my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders, to attend an event at Bryan High School that surprised and honored our Virginia's Region Four Teacher of the Year, Mr. Howard Brewer, an Alternative Schools Teacher for inter-aging, alternative schools. It was really wonderful to surprise him. He's an amazing educator, so we're really excited to see him progress through that process, and we are just, want to, again, I want to publicly say thank you for all he's done and congratulations. And with that, good night, everyone. Meetings adjourned.[1735.21][1735.21]